Thank you.
I'm gonna go text Tommy. See you later, mommy.
Okay.
We'll be in. Thanks, Tommy. I know. Everybody's on. Everybody's jumping, doesn't it? As we can cut them.
He's on, he's just had to get on with his iPhone.
I have 6:30, I'm gonna call this scheduled meeting of current city council to order at this time. Item number one, any citizen recognized by the mayor may appear to present pertinent information to the council. The open meetings act article number 6252-17VTCs however prohibits the council from rendering a decision unless prior notice has been given and posted publicly 72 hours in advance of the meeting and the person person's name and subject appear on the posted agenda. Exceptions may be considered if the request is accompanied by a statement during the nature of the urgent public necessity required the addition to the agenda no less than four hours in advance. If I could get everybody to rise at this tone for the US and the Texas flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And at this time, I would like for Brother Whitefield to please come forward and offer our invocation this evening. He is with the Church of God here in Kermit.
Father, I pray, oh God, that you would guide us and direct us by your spirit. Lord, that all wisdom, knowledge, and skills would be given to this council, Lord, in decisions that they make. And Lord, I pray that your blessing would be upon the city of Kermit. Lord, guide us by your Holy Spirit tonight in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay, number four on the agenda is discuss matter of business from the public. Council members will not deliberate on any comments which are made by the general public. The public and council are to follow the rules of the public comment period as set forth in resolution number 13-06. Is there anybody here at this time that would like to address the council? All right, we will go ahead and proceed to item number five, recognition of any visitors, citizens of the month, and/or presentation or proclamations?
No.
Okay. Number six, discuss and consider approving minutes of the special city council meeting on March 9, 2023, the regular city council meeting on March 16, 2023, and the special city council on March 21, 2023. All councilmen and councilwomen should have all three sets of minutes before them.
Mr. Mayor, if nobody has any questions or objections or corrections, I'd like to, at this time, approve the minutes for the meeting of March 9, March 16, and the special council meeting of March 21.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Hope Williams to accept the minutes as presented. It is seconded by Councilwoman Corina Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number seven on tonight's agenda is consider resolution 23-07, resolution by the city of Kermit, Texas, denying the distribution cost recovery factor rate request of Texas and Mexico Power Company made on or about April 5, 2023, authorizing participation in a coalition of similarities situated cities, authorizing participation in related rate proceedings, requiring the reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses, authorizing the retention of special counsel, finding that the meeting complies with the open meetings act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date.
This is just a step on the West Texas gas rating, or Texas and Mexico rate increase with the coalition of the other cities that are on board with this meeting.
I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution 23-07. I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Corina Chavez and seconded by Councilwoman Hope Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number eight on the agenda is discuss and consider approving the 2021-2022 audit that has been presented by Whitely Ken.
Councilman Mayor, we have Laura Lynch with Whitely Ken on Zoom, and he's gonna present the audit, or just kinda go over a little bit of it.
Yes. Hi, I have a presentation to share with you.
I have some ideas. Thank you. That's fine.
Sorry, Laura.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Am I able to share my screen?
What do I need? Do I need to do something on my side? Share screen?
It has it as disabled, so there's, you can enable that.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
It's usually down at the, at the bar at the.
Right here.
Yeah.
Try that, Laura.
Okay, now let me find the right one to share. Okay, so you should be able to see, is it PowerPoint?
Sorry.
Here it goes. There it is, okay. All right, so we are happy to be here tonight presenting this, and I believe we're talking to Rita as well. I think this is the earliest that the audit has been completed and presented, so I think that's pretty exciting. Um, we just have a few.
Laura, can you hold on a minute?
Yes.
The people that are on Zoom, please mute your microphones. There we go. Give it a try, Laura.
Okay. Whoops.
Somebody else.
So just a few slides of new, real quick, um, first, I'm not sure, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the responsibility of the different parties involved, like the financial statement committee, management has the role of being responsible for.
Let me try something. You should be able to mute everybody. Yeah, and then just go back and, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe that'll work now.
Okay. Now I feel like, I feel like I can hear myself now. So going through the different responsibilities, management, of course, has responsible for internal control and the preparation of the financial statements. City council has the responsibility of ensuring that management meets their responsibilities of implementing the internal controls. And then the auditors, our responsibility is to accumulate enough evidence during our audit to support an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. So the audit process, we go through, it's not, you know, we don't just come in and look at a couple of things, we do go through a process, we, we obtain some preliminary information, we go through a planning process, we look at the internal controls and identify the key controls that we wanna look at, and we test those controls, so we test, we select samples and we test some payroll transactions, we test some non-payroll transactions, and we test some revenue transactions, and any other significant areas that we feel like are significant to the city and that we wanna test. After we've done our test of controls, we perform what we call substantive testing, and what that means is that's when we're testing the balances and the items within the financial statements. And that we do as part of our substantive testing, one of the biggest ones we do is confirmation. So for all of your cash and investment balances, we get confirmations from the bank, we get confirmations on your debt, anything that we can download from the state of Texas, so like your state, your, your sales tax, we can download that from the state and report that, we get a report on hotel, motel receipts, so we can test those transactions. And then the other substantive testing that we do is we do analytic procedures on the remaining balances, and all of that in order for us to provide an opinion on the financial statements. And going through the, whoops, my slides lag a little bit when I click to change them. Okay, look at that one. There we go. Sorry, I click on it and it doesn't move. There we go, okay. So again, the purpose of the financial statement audit is to provide the users of the financial statements with reasonable assurance that they can rely on those financial statements. The independent audit is an evaluation of the city's financial statements, not an assessment of economic well-being. The financial statement audit includes activity as of, I'm trying to, year ended September 30, 2022, so we don't, our opinion doesn't include anything related to a financial forecast or future period. And then the independent auditor's goal is to obtain reasonable assurance, and what that means, reasonable assurance as opposed to absolute certainty, because we can't test every single transaction that the city has, we have to set materiality levels and we have to select samples, so our, again, it's reasonable assurance as opposed to absolute certainty that we would get from testing every single transaction, and that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So the, the purpose is to express an opinion on the report, and there are three types of opinions that can be issued on a set of financial statements, going from left to right, the worst would be a disenter, and that would mean that the records we get are in such poor shape that we aren't able to go through and issue an opinion on those financial statements. In the middle would be a qualification, where there might be a modification due to a certain area of the audit, but we, we don't feel like it is enough to provide a disclaimer. And then on the far right would be an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements, and that is the opinion that you have on your financial statements for fiscal year 2022. So again, unmodified opinion, and then our audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. And on the next slide, what that means, the government auditing standards, is that we also issue an auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. We do have an additional letter that goes along with the financial statements. There were some findings related to year-end closing procedures, also related to cash dispersments and purchase order systems, system, no instances of non-compliance and no instances of fraud, just a, a quick discussion on the, the findings that we have in there. These are procedure, the year-end closing procedures, we have talked with the finance department, and they have, have things in place to, to work towards those closing procedures, and that just means that on a, on a daily basis, or on your normal monthly financial process, your governmental funds are maintained on kind of a modified accrual basis, which is somewhere between full accrual and cash, but for financial reporting, that needs to be, some of those things need to be accrued fully in order for your financial statements to be materially correct. And so we've just worked with the finance department to make sure that there's some reconciliation, additional reconciliation procedures in place in order to reduce some of the entries that have to be recorded in order to close the, the financial statements and prepare the financial statements that you receive. Cash dispersments, that's just kind of bringing all of the accounts that you have under, under one single process, so that they all follow the same process for dispersments. And then a purchase order system, which we understand you do have that through, in code, it wasn't in place in fiscal year 22, but fiscal year 23, that is going into place and will be, will be used. And then, next slide, sorry, it's kind of slow. So some of the areas that we do test internal controls over, like I mentioned, we test payroll transactions, we look at your HR files, make sure that the payroll transactions agree to the approved amounts, we look at accounts payable and your, test those, make sure that the invoices agree and that they've been approved, and then we test your revenue sources, we look at some of your IT, you know, the, the safety that you have in place with your, with in code, and then we look at the financial close and recording process. This is just a quick overview of your statement of net position, which is your total activities, there's a comparison from 2021 to 2022. When you look at this statement, this is a picture of the city, all of your assets and all of your liabilities, so this is gonna include all of your capital assets, all of your infrastructure, and all of your debt that goes along with that. So you had your current assets, you ended the year at, with 12.8 million, capital assets net, that means net of depreciation of 11.8 million, your total assets ended at 24.6, which is up about 3.1 million from the prior year. You have your total deferred outflows of resources, these, your outflows and inflows down here, these relate to your OPEB and pension liabilities, and then, so there was a decrease there from 0.6, from about 600,000 to about 400,000. You had your current liabilities, a 5.5 million that decreased from 7.3 million in the prior year, and your long-term liabilities, which is your, your long-term debt and your pension and OPEB liabilities that I mentioned, went from 2.1 million to 3.3, and that was related, the increase was related to your OPEB liabilities, because your long-term debt would have decreased by your debt service payments. And then your, so your total liabilities did decrease by about 600,000, and then those deferred inflows of resources did increase from 300,000 to about 1.1 million. So you had a total ending net position of 15.1 million, with your net change of 2.7 million. And then on the next slide, you'll see a breakdown of that 2.7 million dollar change. So your program revenues, you had 5.9 million, which compared to your previous year at about 5.8, so not much change there. Your general revenues, 4.2 million increased from 3.1. So overall, your total revenues, 10.1 million, was up by about 1.2 million from the prior year. And then your expenses, with general government, public safety, culture and rec, public works, water utility system, and solid waste, of course, public safety, that's, that's usually the, the highest expenses there, and that was pretty consistent, just going up by about a hundred dollars there. And then your water and sewer system remained pretty consistent there as well. So overall, your total expenses went from 7.9 million to about 7.5 million, so you had an overall decrease of around 400,000. This other is some parapet adjustment amount that did go into your change in net position, so that's how you get to that 2.7 million. The next page, we're gonna look at your general fund revenue, excuse me, general fund revenues in total, so you have 3.9 million in revenues in your general fund, sales tax makes up about 52% of that, all of that property taxes, sales tax about 2 million, property taxes about 20% of that, a little over 800,000, and then the remaining areas, franchise tax about 7%, license and permits 6%, actually, your license and permits, fine, the fees and charges for services, all around $200,000 at 6% of your total revenues. And then on the expense side, you had 4.2 million in expense, or sorry, 4.1 million in expenses, again, public safety making up about 53% of that, at 2.2 million, your general government 16%, streets, humane and city shops, and there's three departments in there, made up about 21% of that, and then your parks and cemetery 8%, cattle outlay at 2%. And then looking at that from the budget standpoint, you can see that your revenues were over budget in the general fund by about 1.3 million, sales tax were over budget by around 100,000, fines and fees over budget by about 227,000, and your expenditures were under budget by about 165,000. So your fund balance did increase by 325,000 from operations, and then, I can move that, from operations, and decreased 50,000, $50,000 for a parapet adjustment, for a net increase of 269,000. And then your actual revenues and transfers over expenditures by 325,000 versus your final budget, so you had a budget, a final budget deficit of 1.9 million, but your fund balance in general fund actually increased, so you had a positive variance in your general fund budget to actual. The remaining slides, just go over some required communications that we have to cover. We do look at the city's significant accounting policies, and the accounting policies and methods are appropriate and in accordance with industry standards. There was a new Gatsby statement implemented in fiscal year 22 related to leases. Accounting estimates, and not all of the amounts in the financial statements are supported by an invoice or a set amount, some are related to estimates. We look at those estimates, the allowances for doubtful accounts, and make sure that management has a reasonable basis for making those estimates. And then your net pension and OPEB liabilities and the related deferred inflows and outflows, that's one of the largest estimates on your financial statements, and those are, those are not actual liabilities of the city, that's your pension and supplemental debt benefits that you have, and that comes from TRS and the actuaries, they provide those estimates, and as I said, it's not an actual liability of the city, but it's paid out over time through the contributions that the city makes towards the, the pension, the pension and OPEB payment. And then through the procedures that we do, we, we assess that management has reasonable basis for those estimates. And then there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, there were no uncorrected misstatements, so while there were journal entries, which is part of the, what leads back to the, the findings in the financial statements, so there were journal entries that were brought to the attention of management, but as, all of those journal entries were agreed and approved by management and posted to the financial statements, so there were no material uncorrected misstatements that were identified, and we had no disagreements with management over the application of accounting principles. There were no, or the last bit of information that we get is called a management representation letter, and that's a letter that will be signed by Frankie and Rena, and it says that they've given us all the information that we requested, and to the best of our knowledge, everything is presented as, as fair and nothing is in withheld. No consultations with other accountants, that would be fine if there were consultations, but we would need to, or want to know that as part of our audit, if information was being given, you know, from another, another accountant. And no major issues discussed with management prior to attendance, so in other words, there's no, our responses, we don't feel like we are pressured into giving certain responses in order to be retained, every, there, we have all the cooperation that we need from the city, and that's the last of the slides, so if you have any questions about the presentation or the financial statements, I'd be happy to answer those.
Laura, this is Hope Williams. You had some deficiencies in the last audit, and I just wanna re-verify what's your last letter, your findings from the prior audit, that all those deficiencies had been corrected? Am I correct in that assumption?
So based on the discussions, they have, I can pull up, let's see, I have it open, just give me a second to move it to the right screen. All right, able, do you see the reports now?
No, we're still on the questions.
Okay, I think it's how I'm sharing it. One second, let me change to share my, share the right thing. I just have to, let's see, sorry, I'm kind of getting these out as well. Okay, so let me share. Okay, you see that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me move this over here. Okay, so the findings that we had is, let me go to the first one, so that is the, so the year-end closing procedures, and through talking with Rena on these, we have given her the reconciliations and things like that, and spent some time, you know, going through those, and throughout the year, you know, if she's got questions on any of them, she can definitely check with us on those. So, you know, the, the plan is in place, and, and she's working on those closing procedures to make sure that there's fewer journal entries required. So there were no material uncorrected misstatements that were identified. And we had no disagreements with management over the application of accounting principles. There were no, or the last bit of information that we get is called a management representation letter. And that's a letter that will be signed by Frankie and Rita. And it says that they've given us all the information that we requested. And to the best of our knowledge, everything is presented as fair and nothing is dimmed with hell. No consultations with other accountants. That would be fine if there were consultations, but we would need to, or want to know that as part of our audit if information was being given, you know, from another accountant. And no major issues discussed with management prior to attendance. So in other words, there's no, our responses, we don't feel like we are pressured into giving certain responses in order to be retained. We have all the cooperation that we need from the city. And that's the last of the slides. So if you have any questions about the presentation or the financial statements, I'd be happy to answer those.
Laura, this is Hope Williams. You had some deficiencies in the last audit. And I just want to re-verify what's your last letter, your findings from the prior audit, that all those deficiencies had been corrected? Am I correct in that assumption?
So based on the discussions they have, I can pull up, let's see, I have it open. Just give me a second to move it to the right screen. Are I able, do you see the reports now?
No, we're still on the questions.
Okay, I think it's how I'm sharing it. One second, let me change to share my, share the right thing. I just have to, let's see. Sorry, I'm kind of getting these out as well. Okay, so let me share. Okay, you see that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me move this over here. Okay, so the findings that we had is, let me go to the first one. So that is the, so the year-end closing procedures. And through talking with Rita on these, we have given her the reconciliations and things like that and spent some time, you know, going through those. And throughout the year, you know, if she's got questions on any of them, she can definitely check with us on those. So, you know, the plan is in place and she's working on those closing procedures to make sure that there's fewer journal entries required at year-end to close your financial statements. And then the segregation of duties, cash disbursement, I believe that's also one that is in the process. It looks like there are six accounts remaining, I think, that they're still working on that. And that's just getting, you know, when you have that many cash accounts, it's best to have the same procedure for all of those, the same people as signers and the same approval process. And so I know that is in, the corrections for that are in process. And then the purchase order system, that one I know is in place for '23. But again, you know, we didn't, we didn't do any procedures on '23 yet to check, to see how it's in place. But I know the module was purchased and added to encode. Are there any other questions?
I have a question, but I do have to request your, your information was very informative, very detailed. But I also liked your slideshow. Cause you kind of shortened it.
Yes.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, I'll send it over. I'll send it over to Rita and Frankie. And I appreciate that. I know nobody really wants to go through all 77 pages of that report. So we try to condense it and put the, put the exciting stuff in there.
Yes, you had a lot of exciting stuff. You might have a copy of that, you know, my thing.
Okay, I'll send that over.
Does anybody else have anything to bring in for concerning the audit at this time?
I make a motion that we approve the 2021, 2022 audit.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilwoman Hope Williams to accept the audit is presented. It has been selected by Councilwoman Corina Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Good job ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you Laura. I want to get through those to Rita because I've been here 17 years and this has never happened. Thank you Laura.
All right, we'll send that over.
Aye.
Good job Rita. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the earliest audit. It's upset up here.
Yes.
Item number 10 on the agenda is discuss and consider quote from Western Industrial presented by Jerry Bailey for, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's go back to number nine. I'm sorry, I did skip one. Discuss and consider quotes from DellCom for internet at the Kermit Civic Center, the Kermit City Shop and the Animal Shelter. And the DellCom bits are in right up here.
Yes, y'all asked me to get quotes on this. It's actually not as expensive as I thought it was going to be. Evidently, they have a line close to the animal shelter. So, so on the Civic Center, to build, to build the fiber line, it'll be 3,000. And then there's a three-year contract for $185 a month. And then on the city animal shelter, it's just the three-year contract of 185. There's no bill charge on that one.
And that's 185 a month?
Yes. And then the city shop, the build location is 1,500 and it's also 185. So we would take the Civic Center out of hotel motel and we have money budgeted in the shop to do the bill for the fiber line for that one.
So we'll be looking at about $2,000 a year on the, the monthly charges for all, for all three of them? For three years?
Yes, sir.
In three-year contract? That's not bad.
Motion, give them some internet on that.
Yes, I'll second that.
The motion has been made.
I'm going to reword it. I make a motion and we approve the DellCom internet.
The motion has been made by Councilwoman Corina Chavez to approve the DellCom. Contract is presented for the Civic Center, the city animal shelter and the city shop. Who seconded it?
I did, Ms. Hope.
It was seconded by Councilman Hope Williams. All in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And now item number two. Discuss and consider quote from Western Industrial presented by Jerry Bailey for smart meter.
Okay, I have Jerry Bailey here and then I also have Kirk, what's his last name?
Kurt Barnett.
Barnett on Zoom. I handed these out late, so you have them. They weren't in your original package. It's a shell shock, but he's going to explain what's fixing to come up with these meters. So I just wanted y'all to listen to him and see.
Yes, thank you. I'm Jerry Bailey with Western Industrial Supply. And Kurt Barnett takes care of our meters and everything with our meters. And so I'm going to turn it over to him. And then if we have any questions, I'll come back or he'll come back and answer them, if that's okay. Kurt, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry I'm not there. I've been, hello, I love the weather, so, and my video's not working. So I'm going to try to work through this as well as I can. So the reason we're here tonight is y'all have been using census meters for probably 30 years. And as of last month, census has stopped making the meters that y'all are putting in ground, which are the direct read meters where your guys have to go in physically, pop the lid, look at the register and pull the read off of the meter itself. You do have a handheld device that you use where they can actually put the read in manually in the field. What's changing now is there's no more of these direct read meters. Census has totally gotten out of that market as of last month. So basically, we need to look at transitioning over to a little bit higher level of technology. And so if I could share my screen, I'll show you kind of the progression of what we're looking at here, if that's possible.
You should be able to, I didn't change anything back.
Okay. Okay, can you all see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, here's what we're looking at. If you can see this, this is, this is the meter that about half your town currently has in the ground. And this is actually a newer meter. The older stuff you have, the brass meters, they stopped making back in 2017. And so those meters are quite a bit older. So this is the, this is the current meter that we are supplying with you for these guys. So this is an analog, analog register. So your guys are going to pop them in and get the read from where it says underneath the gallons here. So what we're looking at doing is transitioning you over to an electronic register that has this wire coming out of it. So they would be able to actually take a device and touch this little black knob here and actually pull the meter directly, pull the read directly off the meter. And it would automatically go into a handheld device. So it takes all of the human error out of the reading process and speeds it up probably threefold from doing what they're doing right now. Because this, this is the way it would be set up. So here's, here's one thing. What we'd be doing for 1,218 of these meters is we would remove this register, leave the base in the, in the ground and then just add this register to the meter that's already in the ground to save you a significant amount of money for each one of those. So that's over half of the, of the city. That all we'd have to do is change the registers out and not pull the whole meter out of the ground. And so it would look something like this with it. Again, I apologize for my voice. So it would look something like this. So this knob would, let's pretend like this, a meter can. It would go up inside of here. And then that black knob is actually sitting right in the middle of this, this black circle. And then the gentleman would go by and they'd have this wand. And they would touch this end of it, to this part of the, of the device. And that would pull the read off the meter. And then it would go into this handheld device, which y'all already have. And, and so they would just walk down the alleys. And, you know, some cities, you know, drive down the alleys and have a, have a gator. They'll have a guy on each side just popping meter cans. And I mean, they can, they can knock, you know, an alley out in 15 minutes where it might take, you know, two hours before. So it's really going to give your guys a lot less time reading meters and more time being out in the field, you know, doing really what they're supposed to be doing that's taking care of the system. So any questions on that side of it?
Okay, the deals on here that are at a thousand, at 100, that's the little meter cap deals?
So that would be, that would be the entire meter.
Is there a discount for buying that much, that many? Or do we have to buy them all at once? Or we can just?
No, and what we're planning on doing is, I mean, the easiest way for y'all to do this is kind of phase this in. I mean, you don't have to jump in with both feet. And really, you know, we've got the opportunity to, to bring in a thousand meters from our Phoenix office that the customer over ordered. And I can get you those, get those thousand right now. And that would be at, at this price. If we have to go in and start looking at, at new orders, then the wait time on those is significant, as it is with every other meter company out there. I mean, it's, you know, you're looking at seven, eight months minimum to get new meters at this point.
And just, just to FYI, so I pulled a report, we pulled a report and it looks like we have about 2,300 three-quarter inch meters that we're servicing right now. And it gave me a history of the, when they were put in the ground. So I have about 388 that are one to three years old. I have four to six that are, I mean, I have 425 that are four to six years old. Seven to 10 years old, about 370, 11 to 15, 313. And I have 919 that are unknown when they were put in the ground. So, I mean, it's, it's, there's no way that all these meters are going to go all out at one time. We, we have in stock in our shop 120 three-quarter inch meters. So when a meter goes down, we have 120 setback to replace them. But now that these meters are being discontinued, unless they have excess on their, on their, you know, on their shelves, we're not going to be able to get these meters anymore. And Jerry had told me that there are different kinds of meters, but they are also going to eliminate the door, eventually eliminate the direct, direct read meters.
So they, they are, at this point, they are totally eliminated, the direct read meters?
Right, census is. But I think Jerry had mentioned that Zimmer is still has some, but they're probably will be going to discontinue eventually.
And that's correct because the directory, that meter business is anywhere from, from 2% to 4% of most of the meter manufacturers, you know, production. And so they're all going to be, they're, they're much, you know, to close down alive and retool for the directory is becoming less and less profitable for each and every one of the meter companies. So you're correct, they're going to be doing away with them. All of them are in, you know, in the next three years or so. They'll say, they'll say they're not, but, but they are. So the other thing is, what do you see here on the spreadsheet? The 1,218 that you have in the ground right now, we can, we can get a new register for $94.22. So basically, you can get half the city done for under, under a hundred dollars.
For meter.
But I have a question real quick. But so we're using a part of the old meter and we're attaching this new meter.
Yes.
Am I following it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're taking the, let me go back over here.
So are those parts also not going to be available?
No, so, so here's the deal. So right now, this is the meter that you have, okay? In the ground, on half the city. So what we take, what we do is we take this white part off and, and we put this white part forward.
Okay, so all you're using is the shell?
Yeah, well, we're keeping the measuring chamber is what we're leaving in the ground. And so that makes it a whole lot easier just to get in there and get those changed out. And, and that would be, you know, very fairly simplistic. And it would be the cheapest route to get half the town going, you know, quickly.
What actually powers those is it, I mean, the meter that's in the ground, the part that's registering the water consumption, is that powered by a battery or solar power or any, is there?
Yes, it has a, it has a battery inside of the register that has a 15-year warranty on it.
It's a 15-year warranty, but they're battery powered?
Yes. And so, you know, they, they really don't use that much battery because the lid's going to stay closed. And so the register is really not going to be, the way we set them up is unless the register's open, the, the register is not eliminated. And so the only time that you're going to be pulling any kind of juice out of that, that register is when you're hitting it with that, that wand to get the read. So we're really not using much power at all.
What, what happens to these units if the meter fills up with water?
They're up, everything's permanently sealed.
Can anybody go lift that lid up to where it's like a customer that wanted to go look at their meter? Could they go do that or is it locked to where they can't do that?
No, no, they can, they can lift it up if they wanted to.
So if they, one, decided to lift it up and then put it back and then nobody noticed it, the batteries would go dead? Is that what you're saying?
Because what I, what I do on these, I also set them, so if, if the lid's open, it automatically goes off after 30 seconds.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about the lid on the, the meter right here?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, the lid on the meter. So if somebody does lift that lid, then the meter, the, the register will, will go blank after 30 seconds.
Okay, and it's a $45 installation per meter?
No, that's, that's on Jerry's side. I'm just adding the.
$45.
Yeah, $45, $45.
And then, I don't know.
It says the whole lid, $45 for installation.
Yeah, Jerry's going to explain what that is.
That's it, I'm sorry.
They wanted me to, I'm, I'm from, I work for Western Industrial Supply. And I also, my wife owns. And I also, um, my wife owns, uh, Utility Solutions. And, uh, so, uh, what we will do is we'll come in and we'll replace, we'll do whatever we need to do to fix the thing inside that charge of forty-five dollars. It's inclusive of, 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 of everything. And so what we'll do is we'll come in and on those right there, we'll replace those. Uh, and, and or on the other ones, we'll replace the meters. And it's a, uh, it's an inclusive charge. Also, we'll, we'll set up, a lot of it is set up and stuff in the, uh, office. Uh, we go through and look at everything. We do a lot of, be sure everything has to jive correctly. Everything has to be pretty much perfect. And so we, we do all that as well. And, uh, then we, uh, we have a Hydravac trailer if we need it. Uh, you probably know what a Hydravac trailer is. Uh, if we need to suck out meter cans or whatever we need to do, we've got that available to us as well. Uh, but that's what Meter Solutions will be, uh, doing because they asked me to, uh, put that into it. Uh, so we'll make it easier on the guys. And we'll come in and access this Hydravac trailer. We can just shh and hit the lid and literally take the box right out of the ground if we need to. We won't, we don't wanna do that unless we have to. But, uh, we, we try to move as quickly as possible. Uh, naturally where we make, uh, where we, uh, benefit from it is we move as quickly as possible. Uh, we do not try to tear up anything. We try to be, that's one of the reasons for this Hydravac trailer. Uh, you know, we, we gotta be able to see things. We gotta be able to see what's going on. So this is a relatively easy install. Thus the price being a little bit, uh, less because, uh, it's a simple, uh, quick, uh, and easy fix. But we do not, I, I hate to use the word speed because sometimes when you use the word speed with a water system, you can tear up stuff. But we move as quickly as possible, uh, without trying to tear up anything or, uh, because when stuff's been in the ground and then you start to mess with it, uh, we try to be as gentle as possible, but as quick as possible.
Jerry?
Yes ma'am.
Now, you were talking the other day about, uh, having to get a welder to cut the lid.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so is that, that's the endless process out here or not?
Uh, yes ma'am. We're making it all-inclusive. Normally, when we talked, it was, it was segregated. But we've put it all into one, one price. And, uh, if, of course, I'd have to get with, uh, with the guys there and see what kind that you have. But I've designed something, uh, because I didn't wanna start fires, uh, out in the cities because you have to have a plasma cutter to cut some of these because they're metal. Now, the plastic is easy, but they probably got a lot of metal lids as well. And, 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 and so I, I'd say most of the cities, majority of them are, okay? So what we, what I've designed is, is I took a, um, a, a sander where you blow sand and you strip it off and I've sealed it. And then I've put inside of it a thing with a plasma cutter where you just, it turns it and cuts it out for us. So we wanna move as quickly as possible. Everything we're trying to do is trying to move as quickly as possible without messing up anything or, or, you know, having a, you know, naturally a fire because you have sparks. Uh, so we seal that so it, it, it won't be no sparks. It'll all be inside that.
Is water service interrupted at the residence during installation? Do we have to shut the water off?
Yes, yes sir. Yes sir, for a, we, we try to move, we try to move as quickly as possible with that. Uh, we try to let them know. Uh, we've done, we've done other cities and, and it's went pretty well. Uh, they will, we will give them notice. Uh, normally what we try to do, because we're gonna be hitting different places, uh, we, we will ask the city to try to mark the cans that we're gonna go to because we wanna move as fast as possible. We ask them to put blue on top with a flag with the address. When I go there, I take a picture of the address. I, I know exactly where I am when I'm there because I don't wanna change out something that, that don't need to be changed out. So that's the reason that, that we get them to go in and help us with some things because they know the city better than we do. Now, if we was doing a complete city, that's not necessary, but we're, we're gonna be trying to save you money, um, with, with that particular thing. So, uh, we would ask them to mark the lids, put a flag on it, be sure that we have the right address. And then we'll take a picture of the, uh, we'll take a picture of the, uh, flag. We'll take a picture of the, uh, SmartPoint and/or meter. Uh, whichever one we're doing, everything, we'll, we'll have documentation on what we're doing when we touch it.
If, in a perfect world, if everything goes according to plan and you don't encounter any problems, what is the estimated time?
I knew you was gonna ask that. Um, we, we, uh, of course, it does depend on everything coming together. When we come out to do it, we don't want, we don't wanna stop. We wanna, we wanna move as quickly as possi- I'm careful about saying that to a city council because, especially when guys like this are sitting over here. Because when you're speed, they say, "We're gonna tear things up." But we try to move, uh, as quickly as, as possible. Um, I, I'd say it depends if you do the eleven hundred that we're talking about. I will need some time to get that done, but we'll have, we'll have several crews that will be in here at the same time. And then we'll be cleaning out stuff and we'll be, we'll move as quickly as possible. I would say that we could have it, you know, the eleven hundred done, um...
Per meter.
Per, per meter. Uh, how long would it take me to do per meter?
Right.
Um... Well, it just depends on what I see when I get there. I'm not trying to evade your question. Um, it, it just depends. Sometimes it, you know, if we're just doing that, that ain't gonna take very long. Uh, I'm gonna cut that lid, that'd probably take, to do one of those, that'd probably take, I'm looking at probably, uh, ten to fifteen minutes.
Okay, so under thirty minutes?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Per meter. I thought you was talking about the whole job. I'm sorry, I did not, I, I'm a man and I wasn't listening, I apologize for that. I had a man, yes ma'am.
I have a question about these touch guns.
Yes ma'am.
And, and they're not, I mean, they're kind of expensive. Is there a warranty on those?
Um, Kirk, uh, Kirk takes care of all our meters. I'm gonna let him answer that, I can answer that, but I'll let him. Kirk, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, did you hear the question?
So on the meter itself?
No, the, the touch gun. Is there, is?
You know, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, it's got a one year warranty on it. I mean, it's a, a physical electronic. So, uh, I mean, I've got those, if, the... If your people take good care of them, they'll last years. If they use them to sword fight, then we're gonna be sending them in a couple times a year. So, you know, I've got, I've got it all promptly for.
So you can?
But literally, literally, if they just get, get it out of the truck and, and take good care of it, if, you know, I've got them out there that are, that are five years old.
So if we sent, if one broke and we sent it to y'all to repair, would you send us, uh, an emergency one to use until that one got repaired?
Yes ma'am, I do have others.
Okay. Do those go back on a recharge, recharger at night?
Yes sir.
And then?
Yes sir.
Yeah, you just plug them in every night.
I, I just have a question for, for Jay. Do we have, are we having problems right now? I, I know they're going out, but are we having problems that we have to make the decision tonight? Or can we table this and then do our homework? Because we just got the quote just prior to coming, I would like to.
Well, is this, where's the money gonna come from? We didn't budget it.
Right. I, I'm just wanting y'all to be aware that we are coming to this point, kind of like when TCEQ said, uh, that, that tanks are not expected anymore. We had to go out for the bond, you know?
Right.
So I meant, this has been on the table, you can ask Jerry. Every year we talk about these things.
Okay.
It's, it's been on numer- I, I'm not, it's been on numerous times.
We have a three-year, uh, time frame to transition, right? Is it a three-year transition?
Well, no, it will be till we run out of meters.
Oh, okay.
You got, you basically got, if, and I'm going by, I think I heard correct, with one hundred and twenty meters in reserve right now. And you have some four inch meters and you, I think you have seven one inch meters, four, uh, two inch, and then a hundred and twenty of the three-quarter.
So we've got enough to get us back for a little bit, this?
It all depends on the weather during the winter times.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That's why we have most of the problems when the meter's busted.
Where they freeze.
And there are, on the new meters, can you still get the bodies for the new lids?
Kirk, did you hear that question?
Yes, so, uh, if, if you look here, the, the bodies are exactly the same between the, the old meter and the new meter. It's just a new register, an electronic register instead of an analog register.
Yeah, well, my question is, uh, if I have a, a hard freeze during the winter time and my body busted, can I get a body or I have to get the whole meter with a lid, with a new lid on it?
You can get, you can get a body.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you see?
The other thing that you have to take into account is that, uh, a good chunk of the meters you have in the ground have been in there for, uh, or, well, let's see here. You got, probably twelve, the twelve hundred that, that, or, no, a thousand that we're looking to change it out have been in the ground, uh, probably twenty, since the initial install, so twenty-five years. And, and you are gonna, you are looking at, I don't know what your, your water loss numbers are, but, uh, on those new ones that you did replace, you, you will definitely see an increase in revenue, revenue off those meters because they are not measuring at a hundred percent. They're, they're probably not measuring at eighty percent.
And Frankie, you said we had about nine hundred plus. And you didn't know how long.
Yeah, it says unknown.
They could be there a year, they could be there twenty-five years.
And it just means that they're, they don't have a service date when it was installed, so.
And y'all will put the dates on them when they're installed? Or is that something we have to go back and do?
Well, one, when, when we replace a meter, we, uh, there's a, there's a service order for it that has a date that we, we've changed out a meter. So we know when that, when we put a new meter in.
Okay.
And we will, um, we will get the ladies in the office to help us because we, uh, the accounting software, this has to be changed in the accounting software. So we lean on, we, we'll get them to help us. The city has to help us to do that, to enter all the information. But we try to take as much pictures and information as we possibly can to have something if we need to refer back to. So we try to have all that information ready to go in because, um, it, uh, it, it has to be done right. And, uh, so it, it works well.
They'll use the wand to get the reading, the reading will go into a, a meter?
Into a, it's a handheld that's right in, you have three of them in there and they'll, the gun actually holds ninety-nine in the gun, okay? And then is, if that, like if somebody has to go somewhere, soon as they come back, it'll start downloading in that gun, into the handheld, excuse me, from the gun. I apologize, so.
Kirk, I have a question. This is Rita Edwards, finance director. So you're saying the meter itself is only running at about eighty percent efficiency because of its age? Kirk?
Are you there?
Sorry, had you all on mute?
Oh, I see how it is. It's the first time.
The internal parts of those, of those meters, uh, you know, you've got stuff that, that's flowing through there. I mean, you've got water, but you also have rust, you've got, uh, sand, different things that, that over time degrade the, the material in the measuring chamber. And so by doing that, uh, generally, well, always, you're going to have a reduction in, in accuracy on the meters. It generally say one, one half of one percent every year.
Okay, and then, and that's not even taking into?
Yes.
That's not even taking into account human error by the physical reading of the machine, correct?
I, I'm sorry?
And that's not even taking into account when they physically have to look down and, and do the, the, the count? The human error involved in that, correct?
Yes.
All right.
And that takes that out?
So there's a, there's a little, uh, chamber that, that moves around as the water goes through it. And, uh, and, and is, you know, you get, the, the edges are a little rougher around the inside of that chamber. The, and the, the measuring chamber, uh, is, is, will, will stick sometimes. It, it just will not move in as, uh, clean a fashion as it does as soon, as it does as soon as it comes out of the box. So, I mean, there's... I can, I can guarantee you that, that those meters, none of those meters, those older meters are within fifteen percent.
Okay, like we have a hard freeze and one of these things freezes up and busts, will our city be able to install a, put this gizmo? I mean, do the complete installation or do we just fix it and then have to get y'all to come out to install the, the?
No, they, they, uh, I sell the stuff and Kirk takes care of the meters. But since I'm kind of doing the installs, I, I, I try to help to be sure that they understand. I'll, I'll do training, I'll do it as many times I go to the cities. I don't know how many times I've been out here to help y'all. If I'm somewhere and y'all have some kind of problem or situation, I try to get you call census first, uh, so they can help. But if that doesn't work, I think I've proven myself over the years I've been here that I'm not gonna let you fail if possible. Now Kirk takes care of the meters, but I've learned a lot from him that I am out here about every two weeks or more than that if I need to. Um, and so we've got, we work good as a team together. And since I'm now doing the installs, I've had to up my knowledge a lot more, uh, so, uh, but yes.
So that, yeah, we would be able to do?
You'll be able to.
The complete installation in account of a freezing?
Yes. You'll be able to take that bottom off, take this off, put a new one on.
And get them back up and going?
Get them back up and going. That, the guys probably could do that with their eyes closed.
You mentioned that you would wanna cut the beer lid with a plasma cutter?
Uh-huh.
When they put that new, uh, touch tone reader, are they gonna snap into the, into the metal?
The actual plastic piece?
Yes.
It screws into the bottom.
Okay.
It comes into the top, um, the hole's here. It slides over, there's a little coupling thing that comes up. It's kind of weird. It, it, it's kind of unusual looking, but it slides up into it and screws in and, and pushes this down and, and pushes that, this piece right here, pushes this piece right here up flush to the top so it can, so, so it can pull the reed. So the, the object is, is to be able, instead of coming, opening up the lid, you just go bam, 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 and keep walking.
Okay, that gizmo that's sticking out the top of the, the lid? It's not, a weed eater's not gonna tear it up or a mower like you had agreed?
It, it's flat, it's flat, it's, uh, it's, it's got a little bit of a, it's got a little bit of a small, little bitty ridge on it, but that's for structure. And lawnmowers, it's, it's not, it's not gonna, if a lawnmower run over it, it's not gonna.
I just want to make sure like weed eaters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty tough stuff.
So to answer your question on that mirror, uh, to locking the lid, we got some locking lids. The lid, we can lock it so that- the lid we can lock, and so that's what can I get into, yeah.
Well, that's, I'm confused now, if, if it's gonna go in a, in the manhole?
In the mirror lid.
The, the, okay, like the one that I've got in front of my hat?
Yes, ma'am.
It goes in there?
Yes.
So how would a lawnmower get to it?
Well, coming over the top of it, he, I, I thought he was talking about the actual, this piece right here that comes through it, there's, I should have brought you one, but I didn't think, I didn't think to bring you one, but my hand is not a good example of that, but it comes like that, the lid, and it is flat. It's not going to, it's not going peed, or, you know, people can, people can tear about anything, but they're pretty tough, they're, they're pretty tough.
If I just, if there was something sticking up above that meter lid?
No, it's, it, it's, it's about that, about that thing right there. I mean, it's, and it's designed to hug that lid.
Okay. Frankie, are there any other companies that sell these meters, or is this?
We're, we're, we're sole, we're sole source, you know, our meter says, Kirk, you can answer that question as well. I try to refer to him when it comes to the census.
Does this have specific territories that, that, you know, so we cover the, the West Texas and the northern part of the state of Texas, or northern part of the state of Texas. The other thing is, you know, by just being able to replace the register on the meters you have in the ground, you're saving a significant amount of money, instead of going in and doing an entire meter replacement for the whole town. So this is definitely your, your least expensive path to, to get this transition.
And Hope, are you asking, like, software-wise?
No, the, the actual meters, if they are the sole source.
There's more than one smart meter out there.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, that's what I...
There's more than one smart meter out there. Yes, absolutely.
Does this need to go out for bid, or does it have to be a larger number?
Um, that would be, I'd have to get with Tommy on that, and then we can see, because I'm not for sure if it's, you know, specific, right?
My understanding, well, it is with counties, anything over fifty thousand.
Right, right.
Lots of bids.
Well, something that, so, so this is not a, this is not a, a meter change out, this is an upgrade, and so that takes it into a, a different place. Because you're not, you're not pulling everything out and replacing it all, you're upgrading certain meters in the system, you're not upgrading everything.
It's, it's gonna come down to whether or not it falls under one of the exceptions of the competitive bidding process.
Yeah.
Yes.
Off, off the top of my head right now, it might fall under specialized services, but I would have to look into it more.
Can you check on that for us, Thomas?
I sure can.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is the other Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Kirk, on the, on the new registers, I think one of the councilwomen I heard ask, what's your inventory level on the new, just the register part?
It's, it's minimal right now.
Okay, do you foresee it getting any better, or is your supply chain gonna be the same as your meters? Do you think they're seven months out on new registers as well?
Well, I, I do, because we're, we're starting to see some loosening up of the, of, of everything. I mean, three months ago, I was happy to get, you know, three hundred meters in, now I'm getting a thousand. And, and so, if the, you know, each month, I'm seeing a, a, a greater, greater inventory coming in, so that's just gonna continue to go, and census is, is, is building new lines as well, increase production. I mean, it's all, it all comes down to chips, right? And, and so, you know, the auto industry's paying three hundred dollars for the chip, and we're paying two dollars, and so, we gotta get that, we gotta get all that fleshed out first, and then things will come in, come working.
And then, and then, Ms. Frankie, how long do you think, and I know it's just an estimate, our hundred and twenty or so meters that we have on the shelf right now, what kind of accounts do we go through of those, like in a month or something?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know. How fast do you go through those meters?
No, they last quite a, quite a while, probably a couple of years, they don't get run over.
How long do you think the hundred and twenty, if we have in stock right now, would last us? Do you think like a year, or a year and a half, for two years?
Probably a year.
If we would, we probably replaced it about ten meters a month?
Yes.
How long is this proposal that's submitted tonight, how long is it?
It's thirty, it's...
Thirty days?
Tomorrow, yeah.
Well, it says thirty days on this, but thirty days from the twenty-first, or thirty days from today.
Today.
Thirty, thirty days from three twenty-one, so. Right.
Ask Kirk that, he was wondering.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we, on the meters themselves, we got some time on that, because those are, those are meters that are, are in our inventory at the beginning. The, the registers, you know, we've, we've seen price increases, you know, about twice a year, so it just, it really all depends on, on that, to be honest with you. I'm hoping the price increases really, you know, start slowing down, because we, I think we've kind of peaked on that, that part as well.
So I heard it's a thirty-day quote that goes out tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll push that out another thirty.
So we would have, we would have until May, May the twenty-first?
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I know, because I'm getting, I'm getting inundated with calls right now, I know everybody's starting to do budgets and stuff like that, so I want, I want to give you a number that, that you'd, you'd be able to use budgetary for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mayor, I'm gonna go back to your question here, you can see, that's it right there, see how flush it is? And see, it has ridges to protect it.
Okay.
So it's pretty flat, but I did not realize that I had a picture of that to show you, but that, that's it right there, but it's...
That's actually gonna be the exposed part, at the top.
Yes, yes, sir. This, this, that other picture was, that little sensor with the black tip comes up in, in the center of that, so, let's say you're weed eating, it'll hit those ridges right there and deflate. That's what it's designed for.
I just didn't know, these things coming up a dozen each week have to be replaced, because weed eater chopped them up?
Yeah, well, that's the reason I came back to that question, because I looked over and saw that, and I said, there's the picture of it right there, so you can see, it's pretty, it's pretty flat.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on item number ten on the agenda? Do I hear any type of a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we table this until we get into budget, and then look at it. Since we have a sixty day, we should be able to do that.
Okay, the motion...
You only did a thirty day.
Thirty days.
No, the extended was sixty-sixty.
Oh, did, I missed that, no, I must have slept through that.
So the motion has been made...
Kirk, was that thirty or sixty, I'm sorry, I just want to be sure we...
I, I truly believe that you could use the numbers as budgetary numbers.
Okay, okay, I just want to get clarity from him.
Yeah, and I will...
Sixty.
I'll send Kerry a copy of the spreadsheet that I, I showed you guys, that'll show also the pricing on the registers as well.
Okay. Or do you want to?
I'll second.
Okay, so Hope, our councilwoman Hope has made the motion to table this until we get into budget workshop. The second has been made by Councilwoman Karina Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't read it with you.
That's okay, it better.
Okay, item number eleven, discuss and consider the request of Kermit Chamber of Commerce for permission to host a Fourth of July parade on the city streets with barricades slash Kermit Police Department escort, date being Friday, June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, just started approximately eight o'clock P.M. And I believe we have Kerry and Ricky with the chamber?
No, he's not with us.
He's definitely in the chamber.
Good evening, council. Just, once again, we're gonna do the Fourth of July parade, it'll be on, the fireworks will be on Friday, the first, and so we're gonna do the two-day event, and so this is gonna kind of initiate the beginning on Friday evening.
And the fireworks...
The fireworks will be Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah.
Fireworks will be on Saturday evening.
Fireworks will be on Saturday.
Okay. And this is a nighttime parade?
It is.
I like that.
It will be lit like Christmas.
Yes, I like that.
Yeah, maybe a little cooler, maybe a little more...
I have time to go get my little...
Do you think it'll be darker than eight o'clock?
Well, we want to line up right here in front of the...
Start line up at eight?
Start, start line up, hopefully kind of pull up.
Because you're probably not gonna be dark enough till about nine thirty.
Well, we're hoping, well, the last couple of times, it's lasted about an hour, so we're figuring by the time, surely by the time we get at least close to the, to the county park, it'll be rather on the darker side to where we can at least enjoy the lights, it'll be much cooler also.
I was gonna say, A is still gonna be pretty, pretty daylight.
Well, we didn't want to do it any later, because I passed my bedtime. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, any, any later, I know that they're gonna have some festivities that I'm not even a part of, some hamburgers, hot dogs, and a DJ, I think, or some, they've got some other activities to other part of the chambers.
Christmas parade, we can start it, usually we start it at seven, but it's pitch dark usually, and I thought, well, at eight o'clock, it's still gonna be...
I think you could get the whole event done.
Yeah, we're hoping.
Because it's gonna be going, yeah, the sun's gonna be going down a little bit.
The first time to do an evening parade, yes. We've had a parade, I think, the Fourth of July, the last two years, I know.
I'm excited about it a lot.
Do you see any issues with the, helping them out on the streets and all that?
I'll make a motion, we accept the parade.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilwoman Karina Chavez to grant permission for the Kermit Chamber of Commerce to do their parade on Fri, the evening of Friday, June the thirtieth, seconded by Councilwoman Verdi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Look forward to it.
We'll look forward to it.
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve, discuss and consider procedures policy established for drug, drug testing of the city of Kermit employees. I brought it up, and they, did you get this, Frankie, or?
Yes, Tommy printed that out, or sent that to me, and he wanted y'all to kind of look it over before we went into a lengthy discussion about, he realized, I mean, we realize our, our drug policy probably does need to be updated.
Yes.
But there's, you know, there's certain things you can, you can drug test, like your police officers, your C.D.L. drivers, which you can't randomly just, according to T.I.L. Yeah.
I can give y'all a quick rundown, while y'all review that.
Go ahead.
The general rule, the general rule is that you have to have individualized divisions to test, because a drug test is considered a search, and the city of Kermit is a government, so those searches are protected by the Fourth Amendment. There are exceptions that would allow random drug testing in certain instances. As Frankie mentioned, law enforcement who carries firearms would be one, those involved in certain public transports, operators of heavy machinery, employees working in high-risk areas, wastewater treatment, employees who handle hazardous chemicals, and then there's the exception for post-accident drug testing. So, we do need to define what our policy is, and I'm not sure what direction y'all are wanting to go, but if we decide we want to implement drug test, random drug testing into one of those categories that I just mentioned, we still have to have a compelling interest to do so. And that means we have to have more than just law enforcement as a, as a reason for wanting to start testing our law enforcement officers who carry firearms and our, and, and those who operate heavy machinery, we would have to discuss first what our compelling interest is to do so. The most common would be the judicial safety reasons.
So basically, that's gonna be, we're gonna need to do an upgrade on our current policy.
Oh, yeah, we, we definitely need an upgrade, or, or just, just a better definition of our current policy, because our, our current policy is, I mean, it, it's outdated with regards to our laws.
Very much so.
I mean, it, it, it mentions random drug testing, I know that the, the city hasn't done random drug testing in years, but we need to correct that to where it doesn't even reach them. But if, if y'all take the time and review that, I guess, kind of discuss it and see what direction you're wanting to go, I just wanted you to be aware of the, of the limitations.
Yes.
Not, not being a private company, we don't have the same options as, as a private company, but we've got to be aware of it.
And that might be a subject that we want to do at workshop.
Yeah, on the Tuesday. Now, does, do you know, do you follow, does that follow under OSHA or not? Do you know?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Does DOT follow under OSHA, or does OSHA not have anything for, to do with government?
I'm not sure, I, I know DOT is gonna have its separate, its separate rules for, for C.D.L. drivers. Regardless of what the city's policy is, C.D.L. drivers applied, employed by the city still have to comply with the drug testing required by the state.
Okay.
Ronnie, do I hear anything else on item number twelve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Ronnie?
Yes.
I, I know we have a workshop coming up or something in May, I, I would like to see us maybe reach out to an outside consulting group, and see if they can help us review these policies, not just the drug policy, but any of our policies that may need to be updated, maybe do an organizational review, and just kind of give us some ideas of how to strengthen our city's core. So I don't, I don't think it needs to be a motion or anything tonight, but I was just wondering if, if we could include one of these consulting groups in one of our upcoming meetings, where they can come to a presentation and see if there's something that, that might benefit the city on, on the way our policies are designed, constructed, and implemented.
Sounds good. Okay, do I hear a motion then to table item number twelve, until we have a chance to review this, and maybe bring this up and discuss it at our next workshop?
I make a motion that we table it until we can, we can look through it and go to our, our workshop.
And bring up the suggestion?
Yes.
Of Mayor. Our motion's been made by Councilwoman Judy Williams to table item number twelve until we can review information that has been provided to us, and do some discussion on this during our next workshop.
I'll second that.
Okay, and seconded by, okay, it was seconded by Karina, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And we're gonna include somebody to come in during our meeting, do we, is there somebody waiting? Okay.
We'll discuss that in our next workshop.
Which is gonna be Tuesday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I?
So Judy made the...
I'll have to double-check if they can come in and chat quick or not, but I'll, I'll add Frankie in.
Well, we can do another one if you can't get them.
Item number thirteen, discuss and consider possible pay scale consistencies. This item was put on the agenda by Councilwoman Judy Williams.
Um, Donna?
Mayor Protem, council. I asked Ms. Blackwood, I would miss Williams on this, because I, we once, myself, the chief of police, and my lieutenant, we were discussing this, we went with to a, into Ms. Rita's office, Frankie was there as well, and to discuss this issue that I came across. When I was hired in, in May, sorry, in March, as a peace officer, I was instructed that I would start at the base Kermit peace officer scale. I was instructed that I would start at the base Kermit peace officer scale, their base pay, which is 2113. Provided you a, all the scales that go all the way back to 2016, and then a description of what the pay scales mean. So on grade eight, which is a patrol scale, it shows the starting pay at 2113. Well, during my time here, at least for a year, I never received any paperwork to sign for a pay raise. So I was confused, because I was told as basically I was restarting as a, as a new hire. But this is what, this was what I was getting into on this part, is on the new hire part, it turns out I'm just basically a lateral transfer, since I've never actually left the city. I've been with the city, and next month I'll be with the city as for 11 years. So I've been here since May of 2012. Seven years as dispatcher, two years as a coenforcement, and now a year as a peace officer. So we went to, I thought this might have been just a small issue. My chief of police was on the impression that I was a new hire, so he just asked me to go speak with Rita on this issue. Rita was not there. This occurred on March 20th, 2023, when I approached Chief Ramos about this. I told Mr. Chief Ramos I'm currently making 2440 per hour. The reason why I thought that was occurring is I thought I received my, my step raises, I just didn't have the sign for it. It turns out that's not the case. What that was, was it's saying my tenure, I received a 5% raise as a 10-year employee, and then y'all's 10% increase the alvota for in 2022, I believe, is what that bumped up to. So when I was looking at the scale, it showed me at the six-month sergeant pay, which is at grade nine, at 2440. So in my mind, I was thinking, oh, maybe I was just mistaken, they put me on the wrong pay grade. I'd rather this be corrected, because that one year on grade eight patrolman, I should be maybe in 2557 per hour. So I went to speak with Rita, she was absent, and Ms. Frankie was there in the office. So I decided to speak with her, she was former financial director, she should know the answer to these questions. So I went to her and asked her about it. She stated that since I was not a new hire, there's a lateral transfer. And since, and since I was a transfer, my years of experience stays, so I only received my raise with 10%, sorry, the 5% raise for 10 years, and that 10% raise from council. Ms. Davis said there was no reset to the pay scale, and Chief Ramos had just misinformed me. So I went back to Chief Ramos and advised him of what was stated. Myself, Chief Ramos, Lieutenant Obelos, we should go find Ms. Davis that day, but she was absent right after, right after I talked to her. So the next day, myself, Chief Ramos, and Lieutenant Obelos went to a research office to discuss and ask about the pay scale issue. Rita explained similarly to Davis, that saying there's no reset to the pay scale, and there was now, and there was no reduction in pay for an employee. I explained that based on the pay scale, I will remain at my pay until my 15 year, 15-year mark in four years. This will result in newer officers surpassing me within the first year of employment. Since my raise is at 15 years, and it'll only be 5%, I would have no catch of catching up to a newer officer. I was also brought, so for an example of this, when the newer officer just got hired, in one year he'll be making the 2557. He will be surpassing me instantly. I will have more experience with him as a peace officer, and I have longevity with the city. I don't view that as incentive to stay here, or nor that I feel that is correct. Now, I'm not sure why the pay scale is set to that way, so I'd be making that little money compared to someone who just started in the city. So, as we continue with discussion, I also, it was also brought up that based on my longevity within the city pay scale on grade eight, with 10 years, it shows at 3137, and even at 3014 based on the old pay scale prior to the change last year. Lieutenant Obelos brought that question up, is that should we have hired him at 10 years? The city manager and finance director provided me with no answer on that. But she stated that, and Rita did provide with an answer on this, on some of this, saying that this is normal, that this just happened. Her response was, there is only, there are people in the city who knit sweaters that make more than her. I don't know what that meant, but that's what she described to us. Chief Ramos said this wasn't about her pay, this was about me. And when I asked how we can fix it, Chief Ramos asked if this was something that could be looked into and worked to find a solution. Rita said that she can, but not want to, but she could look into it. Since I'll be passed over, I said to them, since I'll be passed over so quickly by newer officers, I say to them, there's no incentive to stay here. Why would a long-term employee of the city want to remain in the city when new employees can pass them within one year? Rita's response was, oh, well. Well, with continued questioning, at this point, there was a breakdown, and we were ordered out of her office. Rita ordered, myself, the chief of police, and our lieutenant out of the office. Us three were just trying to find a solution, a financial issue within employee. So I, that's so, and before we left, Rita did state that this was a problem to bring it to you. So this is the reason why I was brought to you as a pension. So my question for the council and asking you of the council is, is to maybe look into this pay scale issue and how to correct it for our long-term employee. I just think it's severely unfair. I am newly married, fixing to buy a house, trying to live here. I decided to probably live in the city of Kermit. I've lived here since 2011, this is my home. And I do like work for the Kermit Police Department, I don't want to leave it, because either city policy or changes to pay scale aren't making correct sense. There's other issues behind it that raise questions of what is occurring and how I'm that far behind on the pay scale. When I was a dispatcher in 2017, sorry, 2019, right before I came over to code, dispatchers made a rate of 1998, but before that, they're around $13 an hour, it's very low. I got hired here when it was 1050 an hour. Whenever there was a pay scale raise from, I think it's the, it says it on here on one of these, the pay scale 2018 to 2019, shows a 22% on each grade, I think that's where it came from. So all the, all the grades got raised up by 22%, which bumped the starting pay of dispatchers from the 13 at it was to about 1998. At the time, I was making roughly $17 an hour, a little, a little over with cents, I can't remember specifically, with all the up to five-year raises. Whenever the 19 starting was announced, I was like, that's awesome. That means based on longevity from all these raises, I should be making in the 20s. No, I was placed at 1998, the same as the dispatcher I was training. So a new dispatcher that I was training was now making the same as me, where I've been there for five years. I asked this question to the former chief of police, what's going on? He told me to look into it. A week later, asked him whether we looked into it, no response. So at the time, I was kind of young, didn't really know how to ask this question. Might have thought this was normal and just shut my mouth. And so then I was asked to go to code. I was approached by Corporal Pittman back in the day, just like, hey, do you want to work with me in code? I said, yeah, it sounds like a good job, and then you'll get a pay raise. So I accepted the job, and they started me out at 2113 on the code enforcement, which is the starting pay, which is, 20 was at 2113 at the time. That was on the paperwork, which shows on the paperwork I have for the grade of what description this code enforcement is, and the same as starting patrol. At that point, I was a five-year employee, so while I was started at 2113 as starting code, didn't really, I didn't think about anything of it. But at five years, it shows at grade eight for back then was 2740. So when I was told, the pay scales don't reset, and the city's pay scales are based on the grade and how long you've worked for the city. So I don't know how that works. That's why, that's why I'm, why I'm asking this question. And so far, I understood the newer code enforcement officer who just started, and it started at a lower pay scale than I did. She started at 19-something, if I believe, she did not start at 2113. So I don't know if code enforcement's scale changed, or what the difference is. So as far as I have to believe, these numbers are being pulled out of thin air, or I don't know where they're coming from or why. When I went to ask the question for it, I was ordered to leave an office. So, that's my question, is, is what is occurring? A common theme. I have another officer with me that has a similar problem, who actually brought this up to council the last time this was discussed, around that 10% pay scale, and I don't want to speak for him, you can come up here and speak for yourself.
The last time this was brought up, it was, we, we did the, what is it, the correction? Or it was, it was attempted to be corrected, where we would do a 10% bump, and everyone would benefit by that after 13 months of employment, if I remember, if I remember correctly. So beyond that, it, I mean, this, this problem has continued downward. It, it wasn't solved at the source. I mean, him being a third, you know, a 11-year employee. Yeah, I'm sorry. The, I mean, that's, that's not fair to him to be starting off at a, or being stuck at a certain pay, pay level. My understanding is if, if he was hired on and, and grade eight was the, the same pay for starting peace officer as well as code enforcement, then the, should he not have received step raises to put him up to an accurate level during that time, since he'd been there for two years? Should he have not had, you know, I mean, should he have not been hired on to that certain rate? Additionally, you know, we've noticed that the, you know, with that 10%, I mean, there's still inconsistencies with how it sits into the pay scale. You'll notice, like, myself personally, I'm at, I believe, 274. I'm supposed to be at 285 per the pay scale, but again, that was, you know, compromised with the, with the 10% increase. But it still doesn't match, you know, it, people over time will still eventually overpass me.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what's the issue. I think in the, the main issue is that the city, whenever there's like cost of living raises, the longevity of employees is not being considered. So if I was already had five years of step raises, five years of, you know, pay scale raises, and they changed the starting pay to a new level above it, employees are being advanced that starting pay, but not reset. So naturally, new employees are gonna pass over them. If I actually remember correctly, there was a city employee that was brought up and resigned for this exact same issue. I've kind of looked into other officers. Basically, this scale, this issue affects anyone that was hired prior to, six months before this 2022 approval, this would affect. So any city employee before this is more likely affecting them in some shape or form. So that's my question, is how do we get this fixed, so that long-term employees have a reason to stay here? I don't want to have to leave and try to relocate cities because, because of this. It's, it seems unright and unfair, this is my home.
I, I think a lot of the confusion is because you keep bettering yourselves, you keep going up. So if code enforcement and patrolman is at the same pay, yes, how many years were you code enforcement?
Two years.
Two years, and how?
And dispatcher was seven.
Okay, but take away dispatcher, okay? Because the pay, the code enforcement and payroll are at the same pay, okay? And then, so you've got three years as code enforcement.
Two years as code enforcement, one year as.
As patrolman. So why couldn't he go to the three-year?
Where are you at right now?
I am, right now, my pay is consistent with the grade nine sergeant six month, which I think that's just a coincidental number, I don't think it has to do with me being there. Basically, my pay is just basically what it is based on the raises I've received since I started in 2012. And since the, my longevity was not counted in, whenever there was new raises put in for like new levels of starting position, like I said, as in dispatch, when it bumped up to 1998, and I already had five years of raises, and that was reset at the starting pay, and without any additional bumps outside of the lower percentage rates of being here longer, it's throughout my ability to advance. And that's why my number is so much lower. That's why a newer, any new employee that makes, that's in that grade eight scale will surpass me within a year easily, and I have no chance of catching that employee. So that's always meaning is, it's really hard to have an incentive to stay in working for a city if you know that someone in one year will be making more than you, and in three years, almost making $3 more than you. It's almost insulting.
How common is it, his situation, that he upgrades himself? I mean, he went from this position to this position to now this position. Do we have a lot of that, or it's just kind of, it's just?
Not really, we don't have a lot of.
This is, I think this is kind of a special situation.
We don't have a lot of.
And can you still do code? Do you keep up your?
Any peace officer can enforce code enforcement. At this point, my code enforcement information is irrelevant. As a peace officer, I can enforce any city ordinance or code violation by the city or by the state.
But you still know all the laws and laws?
Yeah, I still help Martha almost on a daily basis still, whenever she needs help, because she still requires that information.
So actually, what you're looking at, the way I'm reading it, is when you went up as patrolman, you had the two years, so you should, you said two years as.
As code.
So you should have gone in like as a two-year employee.
I mean, based on that, if you want to consider it as, as an upgrade, like, I've never left the city. So my, my years is at 10.
Your 10 years is kind of.
So that's why Lieutenant Obelos brought up in that, in our discussion with Rita and Frankie, should we not have hired him in as a 10-year employee then?
Right.
Where he was starting at, at the, at the beginning.
Right. Because he, you're, you're considered a grade eight.
Yes, I've been considered grade eight since I was, as far as I can tell, since I was in code.
But he hasn't been a grade eight for 10 years.
Right, but three.
Three.
So he should be recognized for that.
This will additionally affect new officers coming in, such as, you know, we have a potential new hire that's coming in. He, as well, is also gonna be thrown into the loop. Since he was a dispatcher, and he's, or he is a dispatcher currently, and he's trying to get hired on as, as an officer, he's gonna be thrown into the loop as well, where he, this, this issue will just keep recurring until there's a solution.
With that, with that employee, he's making more than me technically right now as a dispatcher, because of his time, when he got hired, and because of his years as a dispatcher. He's already making more than me, by six cents granted, but he's making more than me as an almost 11-year employee of the city. When he gets hired on, obviously, this is grade eight starting for peace officers, 2113. Frankie said that they do not cut pay. So when he's hired, he'll be hired on as, as currently as a dispatcher with his already enhancements. So even he, eventually, even though he's starting higher, will eventually be passed eventually down the line as well. This will continuously keep happening.
The only people that are not affected are brand-new employees that were, that were hired.
Hired within six months of this issue.
And it's showing dispatchers in, in grade two?
No.
Actually, I think that's incorrect. That's, that's.
That's the old.
Yeah, it's the only one I could find. I think dispatchers at grade five, right?
We reclassified the dispatchers from grade two, that were making 1386.
To grade five.
To grade five, up to make 1998. So it was a reclassification on that.
So dispatchers are now a classification five?
Which is 1998 per hour. I was part of that whenever it was changed.
I was reading this, it was only 13 or 15.
That's what they used to.
Okay, but they're up to grade five now? Yeah.
But see, I think it's a cylinder, because he's classified as a five. You're a, a eight in classification.
Yeah, I was five. When I was dispatcher, I was grade five.
Correct.
But I was also, my grade five, when I was brought into grade five, my pay scale was reset, but not my longevity. So that's why the issue of why my pay is so low compared to where I should be. Because based on my peace officer, I should be at least 2557. I've been here years as a peace officer. But they said they don't reset these scales, they keep it as with where you are per your longevity. So I'm 10 years, but I'm not receiving 10-year pay. I'm receiving less than one-year peace officer pay.
At the 25 you just said?
At 2440, which isn't even on grade eight. That number is just, yeah, the 2440 is just a coincidental number that landed on the happen to match something on the scale.
That's listed under grade nine.
Which is the sergeant's pay scale. What should I say? That's just a coincidental number. That's why I thought maybe there was an error when I first saw this. It turned out it wasn't an error, this is just how it is.
So by being promoted, you took a cut in pay?
Essentially.
Essentially.
That's how it's been, apparently.
So you should have actually gone in at three years on a grade.
At minimum, or at least I'm a 10-year employee, so that's why Lieutenant Obelos brought up, it should not be up hired as a 10-year employee. So my longevity must mean something, I've been here 11 years.
How much an hour difference is that between three and 10?
Between three and 10 on the new scale? It is a $3 difference, just about.
$3, and then you're doing, you're making, what are you making now, 20?
2440.
That would be between the 2440 and 31.
And if you look at the, you know, per, you know, the, the actual like readout of like what your gross pay is, that means if I should be at 3137, I'm missing out on $15,000 a year. And that's, that's a. And that's a, that's a house I could be living in. And not to mention, I don't know how the longevity works, since like I said, dispatcher, I was not compensated from the longevity. You just restart on the base pay scale. That was back in 2019. So let alone all the, the pay I maybe might have missed or should have received, I don't know how much that would even matter, or how much that would even amount to.
So basically, the way you should, with your longevity, the 11 years you had, you should have gone in this 10-year, uh, with the 10-year background?
Based on that, based on as far as what this scale is showing.
But not as a patrolman? The 3137 is 10 years, grade eight as a patrolman.
Right, I mean, it, it, the waters are muddy because of.
I just, I want to just clarify that.
But is there some, well, I understand that, but is there not somewhere that we can meet in the middle? I mean, I would think he would start at three-year, because he has two years code and one year, uh, police.
Yeah, he stayed at grade eight for three years. And, and I, I just.
So I don't think he should have to go back to the very start. I think that, you know, he would need to be at the three-year.
And that's the other issue with longevity, this, I mean, if, if you reset to the three-year, as long as I receive the, 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 if you go back to three-year, uh, then as long as I receive another five-year 5%, that'd be nice. But based on the current city's way of doing it, I will never receive that until another four years from now. So you still put me in the exact same position.
Now, at five years, you would get the 5%?
That's the problem. That's not occurring. They don't reset the pay scale. They don't reset this.
But you also get cost of living?
If we cha, if we changed your rate to 28 to 45.
Right.
In, in four years, you're gonna get your, your 15-year 5%.
Again, but that skips the five-year and the 10-year and everything else.
Because it, you're right. It, it doesn't, when you transfer to a different department, you don't start over at the beginning.
So you get screwed. So there's no reason to transfer or stay, 'cause that means my pay should have stayed where it was. And I should be making more if it would have done. That's the issue. And that's why I brought up as like, when I was hired, do I keep my, cause at 10-year, you get a unique benefit with the city, is you get a, a bump in your holiday and vacation improvement. It goes from like 1.1 to 1.5 or something like that. I don't remember how the percentage works.
So did they, did he get that, or did that get reset?
That's still the same. That's still the same, because I'm still under this 10-year employee.
Okay.
That's the issue. You can reset it back to the three-year, but it's still the same problem. Yeah, it still will do the 5%, but.
You can keep your pay at the three-year, but yet still you're a 10-year employee, so you should still get the 10-year.
Under vacation, yeah.
Yeah.
It calculates it. It changes it. The system automatically changes it.
Yeah. We don't manually go in and change it. On his anniversary, after 10 years, it changes from 2.7 to 4.1.
If you reset him at three-year, 'cause he has two in code and one, and they make the same pay, then in two years, he wouldn't get the 5% raise?
No, it would not.
Because he would be five years.
No, because you're, you're going by the years he's been here physically.
Yeah.
And, and when he hit his 15-year, he would get his 5%.
It still causes the same problem. Or eventually, there'd be a mess up. Someone would get paid at some point more, and then eventually I would catch up, or then never. It's the same issue.
And we, when we, when y'all, we approached this with y'all, we told y'all that there was gonna be a circular, no, it was never gonna be exactly. But we had to get the pay scale up to where we, people would start applying. So I, I'm, I'm not saying that, don't do this. I'm just saying, this is gonna start a pattern, because then the next person's gonna come in and say, well, so-and-so's making this and this. So I'm just saying, we drew a line, we knew, we, we, then if, we did what we could on the 10%, we knew there would probably be some kickbacks like this.
But you're gonna risk losing good employees.
Uh, y'all, you can, I mean, y'all can vote to, to change it if you want to.
The other, the question I have is, uh, is grade eight still the code enforcement starting pay, or is that changed?
No, it isn't. It's farther lower. It's 2113.
Why was Martha started lower? She's at 19, she started at 19 something. Why was she not started at 2113?
Unless it was the, she's, oh, because she started well.
Does she have her, does she have her certification yet?
No.
Okay, so that may be why.
No, 'cause Jonathan never got his certification.
Okay.
I don't know why she, I mean, I don't know unless it was, like, she was hired before we changed the pay scale or something. I would have to look into that.
Well, she was hired, I was, she was hired after we, I was hired at 2113. So that's why.
I think we're gonna have to take these and look at them individual cases.
Well, I think his is kinda different.
His is different.
But what I, I don't agree with is how y'all couldn't have sat down and figured this out instead of doing what we're doing today. Why is it not just?
I had told Jonathan that I would get to it. I'd been busy. I asked Judy, we just didn't put this on the agenda, if we could sit, all sit down, discuss this without being in public. And she wanted, and I understand she wanted.
I wanted him to have his voice.
And I understand that. I understand that.
They need to be able to come and ask things their mind.
And no offense, Frankie, your own financial director's thing of, I can look into it, but not that I want to, is not encouraging. And also, when you bring up that, I don't feel incentivized to work here, and your financial director tells you, oh, well, is not encouraging. It's disrespectful, or she tells you to be out, or yet orders you out while asking questions.
I didn't order you out for asking questions. I'm in the middle of payroll, so I could answer your question and nobody get paid that day. Or we could do this another time.
You could have said it in a more polite and not abrasive manner, like we were talking to you.
You weren't talking to me. Chief was talking over me, and that's when I said, you have to go. I gotta get payroll done.
I'll, you wanna disrupt that now?
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
So when did this conversation take place that they're talking about right now? Do we have an estimated date?
March 20th.
March 20th.
March 20th.
April 20, 20th?
And March 20, sorry, March 20th was I brought the chief, March 21st is we had this discussion, and, uh.
Okay, so, so it's been a month, and we still haven't revisited this?
No, it was just the last paper, the first.
We're dealing with somebody's livelihood that puts their life on the line every day, and Rita, I know you're busy and you have a lot of payroll and financial stuff in the audience, but I, I would think 30 days is a bit excessive.
This was March 28th on the pay period for 41.
I'm sorry, I was speaking. I must have paused for a second. Uh, I think a month, almost a month, is, is a bit long dealing with somebody's personal finances. But if, if y'all could set some sort of a, a time where y'all could meet, I think that would help tremendously.
Can we discuss this on Tuesday as well, in our workshop?
Well, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, I'm, I'm not gonna make, I mean, I will, I'll sit down and listen to him. But we have, we, we approved this new pay scale. If you got, I mean, if y'all want to vote to give him what you think he needs, then I, I want to put that on you, because I don't wanna be the one, not, no disrespect, Jonathan, I'm just saying, because the next employee's gonna come to me and want the same thing. So I will, I'll put that on y'all to vote, and I'll do whatever y'all vote.
Frankie, do, Frankie, do we have any idea how many other employees would be in the same situation?
Uh, no, sir, I don't.
The exact situation?
Um, just from Mayor Hobart, just from my own looking into it, um, more unlikely everyone's gonna have a failed pay cell discrepancy because of that 10%. Either their bank confirmed it, which is probably the very minimal, or not. I can tell you one thing, probably every patrolman in our department has a pay cell discrepancy based on what I'm seeing. Not as dramatic as me, because as they said, I have a unique situation where I've advanced different stuff. Most of these guys come in as straight patrolmen. They don't work anything else. I am unique in the aspect that I started here as a dispatcher to code to peace officer. But even, Officer Stockwell standing next to me also is not at where he is based on his years. Obviously, it's not as bad. It's only like a dollar or something, but it still exists.
And how much?
I, I think if we've made a mistake on the pay scale, and I understand Frankie's point 100%, if we've made that mistake, I think we need to revisit it, but there, there may be a point where we can't, we can't fix it. And I understand what Frankie's saying on that, but we, we, we need to, we owe our city employees, uh, the decency and courtesy of looking into that, making sure that when we pass that new pay scale, we took everything into account. I thought we asked, but we may have missed some things here and there, and it fell away.
Well, shortly after we passed that, uh, pay scale reversal, that's when we gave a certain, pretty much all employees a 10% raise.
To help compensate, compensate.
To compensate for that. And at that time, we were told that there were certain, a certain number of employees that would not fall in that, uh, area.
His is a special circumstance.
Is he?
And all he's trying to do is better than. No, I understand that, but I can see where Frankie and Rita are coming from, that Jonathan is not unique. He's unique in, in the fact that he's been here longer and he's moved, uh, and personally, uh, from what I can see, I would want a promotion.
But that's my point.
Yeah, because you went from 2557 to 2440. Uh, so, you know, uh, but the thing of it is, there's, uh, there's gonna be other people out there that are going to be, that are gonna feel like, okay, well now.
Right.
So are we gonna be revisiting this every single time?
Something could be.
That's my point.
I, yeah, I think for tonight, we need to make the decision, Jonathan, and then we, I mean, go back and let's talk about it again. And I, 'cause I know we went back and forth. We couldn't get it right. Rita did it four times, five times, six times. So it's, it's, there's not gonna be an all-perfect answer, but I think in this case right now, I think it's only fair, like, to look at, at least given the three-year.
Same like during that, brought up that the ones with like, I would say someone said 10 years or more service with the city, that's where they were really gonna notice.
Right.
The issue, and that that was probably going to be brought up down the road. Does that sound?
That sounds about right.
Is that right, Rita?
So in this, he's an 11-year employee?
I'm just literally almost a year since y'all passed this change, which was, it was really in April, uh, April 21st, so.
You wanna talk?
I think, uh, the way we took it, when Jonathan got moved up to as a police officer, is we thought he was gonna start off like a new employee. That's what we thought. So if he started off as a new employee, then then they should have started him off at a six-month raise, a year raise, 18-month raise, and then you'd be in front of him, right? And that, and that, and I think that's how I thought we were gonna do it.
Right, and that, and that's not.
And I think that would, I think that would fix it, if they're gonna promote to a different position. If they go back to that, uh, if he started off as a, a starting patrol officer, he's got this six-month probation, he gets a raise, and then he'd get his year, uh, raised, and, and it'll keep him up with everybody else. I think that would fix it in years.
But then he loses his 10 years.
But no, 'cause she said it would still give him his.
He's still getting vacation and everything.
His vacation and all that, right?
At 10-year level. And have you gotten that?
Yeah, my longevity is still there in that aspect. That's the only thing I wish would not just disappear, which Rita called it as, taking it as a, uh, as like taking it both ways essentially. Like, you want a reset pay scale, but also you want your longevity. Which, yeah, 'cause I don't wanna be passed over by a one-year employee, of course.
So if he would, if he would stay on the pay scale as a starting police officer that came in brand-new, and he was hitting his year, he'd be hitting the 2557, right? And then in, uh, 18 months, he would get another raise, and he would stay on pace. He would stay on pace with, uh, a starting officer.
But then, uh, he's been promoted as a sergeant?
No, he's not a sergeant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not, that's what I said. It just happened to loan up as a sergeant, but it just.
That's just what his pay is at from now.
That's actually the joke I went to chief about. Like, I asked him where my stretch was.
So I mean, and then.
That's, that's the question is, what, why did you get bumped down?
It's just, it's just coincidental. That number is just coincidental where it landed. That 244 is just coincidental where that, that pay scale is. That number has nothing to do with the scale.
Yeah, it makes sense that.
And then would, nobody would ever pass, pass it.
It just doesn't solve.
He would stay in front of, uh, Sherwin.
So he wouldn't get, he didn't get a six-month and a year raise?
Six months or 18 or a year, because I've already been here 10 years. That's the reason why I'm gonna be surpassed by an employee that's making, those raises are a lot higher in the beginning than they are at the end.
But y'all's computer already set up. Give him the raises, huh?
No, no, the longevity.
The longevity.
And, and that's, and that's how I understood it, when we, when we hired him.
Yeah, I mean, how, how did he get from?
So if we went over to what you would be grade eight on three-year, that's sort of where you're looking right now.
At least because, at least based on the grade. But the only problem is, is then because of the way they said the way scale was, I'm still gonna get passed eventually, but.
That's what I'm saying. You should go back to the one-year raise.
And just.
And then 18 months, three years. The only thing is, he's gonna just, I mean, he's gonna retire, what, 20 years instead of the 25-year mark?
I don't know, whatever it would be, but.
But that's, I mean, that's, uh, what I thought.
So in reality, you should still be, okay, two, two years as a code enforcer and one year as a patrolman.
I'm not.
So you should be at the three-year mark for grade eight.
Because of the same grade.
Yes.
But if he, if he laterals over to a police officer, which is more dangerous than code enforcer, you're saying start back over?
That's, because that's what he started off at. He started off at, did you start off at?
I was already at 2113 for two.
When he, when he started off at 2113 when he came to us, right?
Yes.
And that's why I thought at that point, you're, you're gonna do the six months, 'cause he's a police officer now, not a code enforcer. So I thought, okay, they're gonna give him the six months, a year, 18 months, and start him off like that. You understand what I'm saying? And I, I think it makes more sense than trying to say, oh, you're three years.
Then he will follow the whole pay scale.
Throughout his, till he, yes.
He'll be on track.
The only other.
With his.
Because if we put him at three-year.
But he would still be, he would still be, uh, capped out though.
If we put him at three-year, then he wouldn't get the five-year or the 10-years, whatever.
Not till, not till he hits the five-year mark as, as a police officer.
But would he still get the five?
Yeah, that would still. I think what you need to do is when, when you do that, I, I don't, I don't particularly want the six months, 18 months. I think you just do it right up front.
Just do them all.
Right, right, because then it's gonna get confusing that, how is he a six-month employee, but he accrues vacation at 4.62 instead of 3.71?
You would jump him up to 2557.
Right. When you move him, you fill out the personnel sheet, and you move him to that point.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and it's, and, and it's nobody's fault, because something, like I said, it's, it's unique. His is different than everybody else, 'cause usually we hire them straight off the street. They just come out of the academy, or they're coming from another department. You start them off, and, and it's, it was nobody's fault. It was our first time.
Somebody goes from one, one, from code enforcer to patrolman.
This is probably very limited of gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Um, now, maybe you got the one coming from this side.
Yeah, so.
That's gonna be another story.
But did you change their?
So do you start him over at 2113?
That's gonna be, I'll tell y'all.
How many years?
He's only got a year.
But he's also currently making in the 24s as a dispatcher.
So do you start him back over?
I don't think he would want to move him, make him take a cut in pay.
That's what I'm saying. That's all we gotta figure, y'all gotta figure it out.
Yeah, we gotta figure that out. Well, I think maybe we could fix his tonight, and then look at it, look at other things later. What do y'all think?
We'll talk on, uh, the workshop.
Well, we have the workshop Tuesday. We can, we can look at it then.
Here's what I'd like, I think that this type of thing, you know, you guys, supervisors and stuff, 'cause that's where I get the piece of paper from. You guys, you need to make those decisions there.
Okay, we can.
Yeah, because that's more.
But we never, we never had to, because the pay scales aren't there for us, you know, Zane?
Right. But when you get these lateral, and now you'll, you'll have this other one, it's good to, when you say, okay, you take the next guy coming up. when he goes into this, you need to look at this, to see where we're at, knowing how the new pay scale goes.
So do we, so what we need to know from y'all is, like say, Joss is fixing to come out of patrol, how do y'all wanna do that, if they go to, from a dispatcher to a police officer?
Y'all just maybe would have to have a meeting, and y'all could discuss it together, possibly, and decide what needs to be done with that.
Well, basically, he would.
So he's gonna be a one-year in a grade eight, but you can't cut his pay. So see, he's, he's falling into there, I start him right there.
As a one-year.
Okay?
And this is only one part of.
See, that's not easy.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, like I said, it was my first time.
We know it's not perfect, we had to work on it.
No, the other issue being is, what I brought up is about is, is just general longevity, like I said, when I was.
We didn't know.
Bumped to, when dispatchers pay grade changed to the nineteen ninety-eight from the thirteen eighty-six, all of my previous stuff was invalidated, and they started me at the same as a, as a starting dispatcher. So I just felt like my pay wasn't compensated, that's the other issue that I have. So from back in whenever that happened, and when that pay scale changed, you know, my five years up until that point was invalidated, because I was making this, what was it, nineteen, I don't know where it was, but I was making around, where is it at, seventeen ninety-four, I think, and it was eighteen, it was definitely not very high. So when I bumped up to the seventeen ninety-eight, you know, that's starting pay, and I already had five years of raises, and I got reset down to the starting pay, and I was not given that exact same issue. That's my other question, is how, I just feel like, I just feel like I was, that's, that I lost income, essentially, because I felt like my five years up to that point were, ah, don't worry about it, here's your new starting pay, and you don't get it for several years. Because based on that, I did the math on it back then, at the time, it was around like, I should've been making like twenty-four something as a dispatcher, and so I wasn't. Because my five years wasn't included in whenever the new pay scale changed, and it was moved. So I don't know if I just got left behind, or that was considered, or how that happened. So that's the other, that's the other part of this that I had a concern with.
I mean, if we started him at the three-year, the twenty-eight forty-five, that would maybe compensate for some of the others, I mean, we can't really go back, I don't think.
That's where you should be though, right here.
At the twenty-eight forty-five, or?
Or the, well, that would be the, that would be the five-year.
Yeah, he would be at the twenty-eight forty-five, or the three-year.
The three-year.
I mean, and also, they may even take it off of y'all, as Rita said, this is a decision up to the supervisor, this is a decision the chief of police would make, the chief of police officer makes his decision for you. That's also the option, she says that the supervisor, she said that, they just bring it to them, and they say, cool, that's the rate, and that's also a solution.
That would be my suggestion, is to go ahead and put him in the classification A, or grade A, for three years. And it still, still maintain his longevity, correct?
Yeah. Are you okay with that, or?
I guess, good for what it is.
I mean, I've never, in all my life, seen this pay, pay scale like this. So this is different to me, I mean, I saw it when we were doing budgets, and we were talking about it, but, so.
I've seen it since I was ten years, and I still obviously don't understand it, so.
You know, so this is different to me, but I really, I mean, I know you wanna be at the ten-year, but I just don't think we can get that, get you there, because you haven't been an officer.
Yeah, that's what I understand, I'm just wondering, that's because I didn't understand how the pay scale works, because if I'm a ten-year employee, is that, that's what Lieutenant brought to that question.
But as long as you're getting your ten-year benefits.
That's what I asked for when I was hired, is that do I retain my tenure, my benefits of being in this program for ten years? And chief said, yeah, that should be probably.
So you retain that, and then you, you know, then it ups your, you're a three-year employee, and then in two years, you'll get another dollar something.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's, that's, that's my suggestion. And like I said, you, you just fell into a grade nine, it's kind of a quirky thing.
Yeah, that, that number is, that's how I recognized something was off, that's why I made the joke to chief, hey, where's my sergeant stripes? I was on sergeant's.
So you wanna make a motion? Are you, are you good with that?
I'm comfortable with what y'all want to do, because as they said, if they wanna make this a supervisor issue, if chief decides something else needs to happen, he can make that decision himself at that point.
I mean, my motion is gonna, is gonna be to put you at the three-year. So I make a motion that we move him to the three-year pay at twenty-eight forty-five an hour, and then he will, then will get another raise when he completes his, when he's his five-year.
You'll, you'll go ahead and progress up the pay scale chart.
And continue with the number.
Yes, and keep his remaining that he has now.
My second.
Okay, Corina's second. Okay, the motion has been made by Councilwoman Judy Williams to move Jonathan up to the three-year classification on grade eight, twenty-eight forty-five, and maintain his ten, his ten-year benefits, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Corina Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And can I just make a suggestion, like, y'all had spoken to earlier, to, for the chief, to get those quotes and, or pay, and discuss it with Rita, and maybe y'all can discuss it, and have a discussion here going forward?
Figure how far back do they go, where they need to start.
It doesn't, it doesn't start, I have no, I'm losing my voice, I have no decision-making ability. So to discuss it with me is.
Well, or then, well, I won't, it had to be Frankie, but there should be a discussion taking place where it doesn't have to come to this point, is what I'm trying to make.
Now, I, I forgot to ask before I make the motion, does this start in this next pay period, does it start? Can you start this pay period?
Well, the next check he gets.
Yeah. Okay. So it'll be on the next.
Because they got paid today.
They got paid today. Okay, okay.
I was trying to clarify the deductions from the pay scale will have to go to the council. I don't think that the city manager or finance director have that authority.
I know I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
And I don't know about your caller.
He'll figure it out, yeah, thank y'all, appreciate it, Frankie.
Okay, Adam's numbers. Fourteen. Everybody's got a copy of the bills? What do we have to put in the transmission, Ian?
What was that?
Was that?
On ice truck.
I just saw the transmission, and I just wonder, what did he, what, what we replaced that, Ian?
Three days after he got it, when he got hired, at his.
He just picked up the transmission when I.
I have a question on the first page, state criminal cost fee first quarter. Is that all the fees that are due to the state?
Yes.
Okay, so we're paying those quarters?
You pay those quarterly, the child safety, that's done once a year, so you'll see that at the end of the year.
We have five hundred and fifteen dollars damage to a car reimbursing.
Yes, that, uh, after we had the, we had the trailers putting stuff in the trailers here, we had the sweeper up here Monday morning, and one of the officers had his car parked over here, and I guess the sweeper threw some dust and kinda chipped a little bit of, of his paint.
Oh, okay.
So he had it bucked out.
Okay.
We had a, it's just West Texas Gas, we had the bill and then a credit for twelve eighty-four seventy-one. It's on page, page five, about midway down. It just says, West Texas Gas, one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars seventy-one cents, and then a credit of two thousand two.
Well, there's a void, it's voiding check.
Voiding check.
Just a voiding check, I figured that's probably what it was, but just.
Okay, and on CTSI, you have a twenty-seven hundred dollar laptop.
Humane.
And then humane laptop.
Oh.
Travel, is that the laptop that we got for Barbara?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It says repair damage caused apart, five thousand.
Somebody hit the curb. Somebody dumped the curb, they were running from the cops.
Oh, good, oh, that's nice.
He busted the curb.
I saw that.
And crashed down, so we needed to get it, get it fixed, and we were hoping that insurance.
Insurance will benefit first.
Yeah, they must've been going pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big curb.
Yeah. A bill for out west, for euthanasia, for a hundred and nine, how many did we put down for a hundred and nine?
I don't know off the top of my head.
All right, and then we had a psych evaluation for three thirty, who, who was going nuts?
No, I think that the, the discuss, the discussors had to go through that.
Oh, okay.
I didn't wanna tell y'all, but it was me.
We already drove you to it, didn't we?
Page nine, the, what's the breath compressor test?
That's the fireman.
Is that fire department?
Yeah, they're, they're breathing apparatus, they inspect it every quarter, and what happened?
There were five charges of five hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece.
What happened was, this company has been doing it for a while, and we weren't getting the bills. Well, then, I think the fire department changed companies, and now they brought all, they brought these bills. We used to pay it, it used to be void, and then they changed to this name, but we, they were sending it to some bogus email, and we, we weren't getting any invoices in the fire department, so we had, we had to play catch-up.
So is this kinda like, they, they check them and make sure that it's good?
It's not like a fit test.
No, 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 it's actually the machine.
Okay.
I just, I have one on page eleven.
Oh, yeah.
Falling sewer water?
Yeah, because the main leak on van, we had to pump it out, and haul it out.
Twelve loads.
Yeah.
Now, this company, do you know we have to be TCEQ certified? And I don't believe this company is TCEQ certified.
I don't think we have any TCEQ companies around Kermit that are certified.
Ameri, Ameri, Amerifresh? Amerifresh? But because, okay, my question, where, where did they dispose it? Because if you're not, if you're not.
They're disposing the same sewer system that the city provides. They dispose it in another manhole.
So they took it out of one and moved it over and.
Yes, or another.
Because my understanding is like, if we're gonna use anything, any type of sewer to be moved, it has to be, they have to be certified, I think, with TCEQ, they can't, they can't be just getting trucking company.
Who did you say was certified?
Yeah, it's just a regular trucking company, and I don't think that's legal.
Is Amerifresh from here?
Um, you know what, you know who uses them, it's the. Chris of the.
Okay. So BSDB.
Yeah, at the, at the van camp.
Where are they coming from?
I don't know, I'll give you the information. Are you, are we still gonna continue to do this?
Uh, not right now, we got a transfer pump, that we transferring right now from one manhole to another, so we're not using any trucks right now.
I'm gonna get to the.
Yeah, just for future, in case happens, but I looked at that, that's twelve loads. Anybody else have any questions on bills?
No, I just, I'd like to provide everybody with the figures, like I always do, this is probably the last time you'll be bored with it, but with payroll and accounts payable, we spent seven hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and eighty cents for the month's department.
Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Motion's been made by.
I second that.
By Councilwoman Hope Williams, and seconded by Bernie to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, number fifteen, departmental reports.
Okay, so you have your financial sheet in front of you, consolidated account, March two twenty-two, it was a little over seven point five, March two thousand twenty-three, it's a little over eight point seven. Our restricted funds in March of twenty-two, a little over one point five million, and March two thousand twenty-three, a little over one point one million. I, I attached some special accounts, and I'm gonna start doing this on, on the restricted accounts that, if there's any activity in it, aside from interest, I'm gonna give y'all, kinda like Diana does the hotel motel, this is kinda like the same thing. Um, the first, I won't go over all of them, but I do wanna raise a point on the PD special account. Now, the PD special account is more of a lenient account, it's not tied to governmental restrictions, because it is donations from businesses and individuals who wanna donate to the police department for them to purchase equipment that they need. So I know the chief has been talking about rifles, and I did advise him that, I mean, he has thirty thousand dollars in this account, and I mean, if we couldn't get the rifles through the city, I mean, it could definitely, I mean, this is what this money's for, for them to buy the equipment they need, so. And then the next one is the cost for pause, I just kinda showed you the donations that we've been getting in, we didn't have any at the time.
So our balance for the pause for pause is three thousand six hundred and ninety-five?
Yes.
That oughta be enough of that.
That'll, that'll buy a bunch of rifles.
No, that'll fix the bits.
For what?
Cost for pause.
Oh, no, I'm looking at the BD special account.
Well, yeah, I know, but I've already moved on.
Well.
And then the other two we have is the municipal court tax fund in the security building. We haven't spent any money out of that, I've just kinda showed you on the citations, that, you know, the state requires a portion of that go into a, a court tax fund, and that's kinda just the breakdown of, every time they make a, they make a deposit into the general ledger, that's kinda the breakdown of where that money comes from. And on, I didn't, how did I get it? My sales tax, it went up about three thousand dollars, it's one hundred and ninety-four thousand, and I don't know how the total exact, it's in there on my desk, but it did go up to one hundred and ninety-four thousand, so that's, that's helping us be able to look at purchasing some stuff, because I am above what I thought we were averaging. So that's good, that it's staying up there like that. Next thing is, I gave y'all some pictures of this building, CTG, it looks like they may be coming in on the corner of Bel Air and Highway three oh two. Yeah, that, that little building that's there has asbestos, and it's gonna be a little pricey for him to get rid of that asbestos, but he did already send me the plans, the drawings and everything, so that, it looks like they're going forward, I just don't know when, don't break ground on that, I just wanted to let y'all know that I think we'll be in the business in town, a quick loop.
That is awesome.
Hopefully, we can get more starting to, people that are interested coming in.
And so that's all I have, and while Diana's doing her report, I'm gonna step this.
All righty. Hotel motel tax, Diana?
Okay, beginning balance for March.
Beginning balance for March was, uh, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six sixty twenty-five. Deposits were a hundred and fifteen thousand, three seventy-eight eighty-two. Interest earned, three thousand six eighty-four. Brought the total to one million thirty-three forty-five ninety-one. Expenses were, are listed on there, and it was two thousand eight sixty-four twenty-five, with an ending balance of one million thirty thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-one sixty-six.
Diana, what is that, what is that revised?
It's, uh, you have to ask me.
You know she would.
I do it all the time. Um, it's like a, like a tax or something. It has to do with, um-
What is it revised?
Revised, we pay it on a quarterly basis, I believe. Get with me tomorrow, and I'll show you what it is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, get with me tomorrow. And I'll show you.
All right. Recycling center?
Recycling center, I'm giving you the totals for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, March twenty-third, they took a load, they paid us four thirty twenty-five. As of January till now, we have one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six oh five that we've collected. And on the bottom, it says from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, we collected thirty thousand seven fifty-one.
And we're still waiting on the cardboard?
Yes, and we have a lot of cardboard.
Yeah, we do.
This revise has something to do with web content management system?
Yes, it does.
Government CMS providers?
That's what, we do the W W dot Kermit Texas dot-
Okay, that's all right here.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then there's another one that we pay, but it's a tax, like when we do the Kermit celebration days.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Still moderate on drought?
Oh, and just a heads up, early voting starts April twenty-fourth.
Monday.
Uh, Monday through, uh, May second, from eight to five, we're open at lunchtime. So they can come in during lunch.
Oh, you will be open at lunch?
Yes, yes. I do not do the seven to seven anymore, cause we're open for the nine hours straight. Um, election day, Saturday, May sixth, from seven to seven at the Junior High. Just a heads up on that.
So everybody will need to go that, cause you have the school stuff as well.
School, that's one, yeah.
That's citywide, correct?
Yes.
Water report? Yes, on the total meter on bill, water. For parks and cemeteries, is three thousand fifty-nine gallons. Firemen, a hundred and twelve gallons. Councilman, council members, zero. Monday total is three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one gallons. Year-to-date is six thousand six hundred and twenty-one. Water accounts, we got two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven accounts. And sewer accounts is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. We had one water leak, one tap, water tap, and twelve sewer calls. And Ohio Haggis.
Police department?
Hit and runs, two. Accident, minor accidents, eighteen, animal complaints, fifty-eight, simple assaults, two, assistance, five. Bad check, three, break-ins, five, burglary in progress, two, child abuse, two. Child protective services reports, two. Civil issue, six, post patrol, nineteen. Crime prevention, two. Criminal trespass, four, disorderly conduct, four. Disturbance domestic, twelve. Drug driver, one. EMS calls, forty. Escort, five. Fight calls, four. Fire calls, seventeen. Follow-up investigations, twenty-nine. Found property, two, harassment, four. Illegal dumping, three. Illegal parked vehicles, two. Information, ten. Intoxicated pedestrian, one. Juvenile car, nine. Juvenile transport, one. Kidnapping, one. Located subject, one. Loud music, sixteen. Man with a gun, two. Miscellaneous, one. Missing person, three. Mortarist assist, three. Open door, three. Other, seventeen. Patrol call, one. Reckless driver, four. Recovered stolen vehicle, one. Runaway juvenile, three. Sexual abuse of a child, one. Shots fired, one. Silent alarm, ten. Stolen vehicle, five. Street department, one. Suicidal subject, two. Suspicious circumstances, eighteen. Suspicious person activity, twenty-seven. Fifth, five. Threats, three. Towed vehicle, one. Traffic complaint, thirteen. Traffic hazard, five. Traffic stops, two ninety-one. Trespass, trespassing, one. Violation city ordinance, eight. Warrant service, two. Water department call, eleven. Welfare concern, twelve.
Police department run report?
Animal control report? K nine pickup, eighteen. Cat picked up eleven deceased animals, thirty-three. Adopted, one. Reclaimed, three. Stolen or missing, zero. K nine, it benefized, one. Cat benefized, zero. Dog bites, two. Dog quarantine, two. Citation issued, one. Rescue K nine, thirty-eight. Rescue cat, ten. Wink, one. County, one. Carried over, twenty-four. Calls for service, puppies born, zero. Kittens born, zero. Surrenderers, twenty. Calls for service, three. Inspection, eleven. Issue citation, one. Red tag, one. Reinspection, twelve. Letter sent, nine. Duty to use improper disposal, seven. Making connections with service paths without permission, one. Permit required for sewer connection, one. Maintenance of abutting alley, disposing of refuse, refusing public place, four. Building permit required, one. Neighbor complaint, one. Nuisance, one. Maintenance of property, five.
On the building permit required, was somebody building and they didn't have a permit? Is that what that was?
Okay, uh, municipal courts, Cheryl?
We brought in twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and nine twenty. There was a hundred and eleven violations. Seventeen wards cleared. I had, uh, let's see, a hundred and thirty cases I disposed of last month. And I think I've showed y'all the stats on everything and ticket-wise where we're at. Pretty much just about it.
I do have a question. You had eighty-two, for the month of March, which I like that, uh, doing it on, for the entire month like that. Uh, eighty-two citations, three juveniles and five minors. What the-
I don't know, that's how it comes up on the report. They're all minors to me.
Well, I mean-
That's just the way it comes up on the report.
That's what I wondered about, uh, what's the difference between a juvenile and a minor?
I would like to bring it to the councils. I had a, um, dangerous dog hearing on the thirteenth. Found the dog to be dangerous, ordered seizing the dog. The dog was, they seized him on the same day of the hearing. And he escaped from the dog. So the city is still responsible for whatever that dog does. I have a question, I don't understand why the dog catcher took him out of the, um, secured kennel he was in and put him out in the dirt where he could dig out?
He was in a cage, and the cage had two, uh, was locked, but he still got out. He was, he was caged.
I'm reading the police report, the police report said-
I'm telling, I'm telling you, cause I went and talked to her too. So-
I want the council to hear this.
He was in a cage with, with the lock, but he was able to get out. When he got out, he dug a hole.
Can I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. And this, this was Mark Sanchez's report that he brought to me today. He, uh, the dog was moved from the initial interior quarantine bin, where he should've stayed. He was removed where he could get fresh air outside. And you were correct, the outer gate had two latches, one on top and one on the lower portion. The padlock was present on the gate, I guess he shimmy'd through. But I don't understand why she left the kennel and didn't put him back in the quarantine where he should've been, because he is a dangerous dog. If he bites somebody out there in the public right now, cause he attacked a four-year-old kid at Plaza Park. So nobody knows where the dog is, and I can't blame them for that, the dog's gone. But I just want y'all to know, this is a serious situation.
And this happened Sunday night? Was it the dog escaped?
Well, I know when we were out there doing our, our event, we noticed that the gates weren't secure. We noticed that the fencing around needed to be secured. I mean, I stood there and watched a dog that jumped over a cinder block fence. And I was like, oh my gosh. How did he do that?
There was a lot of movement and motion, and hands on and hands off the weekend.
When I left Saturday afternoon, and Sheila Henderson and I were the last two to leave, that dog was in that back section.
That's what she, that's what she told me as well.
In the quarantine section. There was no way for him to get out.
I don't know how or who moved him. The dog catcher did. Barbara did. She did for fresh air. And, and that's fine, I don't mind it, but don't leave that dog kennel and put the dog back. You know, we might wanna suggest do a concrete boarding around that fence to where we don't have that issue again, because if we don't, we're gonna have it again, you know?
What kind of, what kind of dog is it?
It is a mixed, uh, shepherd.
It's black, isn't it?
It's a mixed brown and black.
Brown and black, yeah. I wonder if it went back over, you know?
They checked, they went back, I mean, they, they've been doing their patrols, looking for it. All the officers have the pictures and stuff. Um, so they're doing their due diligence, I don't have any problem with that. I just, I don't think the dog catcher should've left that dog out in the dirt area, knowing it was listed as a dangerous dog. That's my only issue there.
There was some stuff brought up last night about-
We had it last night?
Securing the current fencing that's out there. Cause there's a lot of places where they're digging, digging out. And then she drove up the morning, one of the dogs was on the roof of the building. And then she came out there yesterday, and a Chihuahua had climbed the fence and was on top of the divider. And, um-
So yes, they're, they're gonna, we're gonna need to do something to manage. Cause he dug up, from what I've, the pictures that, I've got pictures and everything to go through the report. But, um, the dog digged, dug a big hole. Cause I, you know, he was out there before. He was out there ten days before. And he was never, he never escaped, because he was never put out on dirt. He was quarantined, and when I see something, that dog is supposed to be quarantined.
Right.
So that, that's my problem there.
Okay. Ted, did you talk to her about it?
Well, she told me about it Monday morning, and I said, how did he get out? She goes, well, I don't know, maybe he dug out, or maybe he got through the fence. And there was three different stories, and I said, well, you know, we're responsible for that dog. So if he bites somebody, the city could get sued possibly.
Right.
That's my concern. She walked off. And then, uh, you know the chief about it, he's never responded yet. And then I went to Tony, and I got the report from Mark. So I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just wanna make sure I have the report to take me.
Sure.
Cause I have another hearing coming up on that dog, what am I gonna tell the owners? I mean, that's sad.
Your dog's gone.
But it's a-
It's a fugitive from justice.
Huh?
He's a fugitive from justice.
He really is a fugitive from justice, seriously.
Spotted, called CD.
Yeah. They've got pictures, all the officers have pictures on them, they all know. They're doing their job, I'm talking to them.
Well, hopefully, we're gonna bring this up in the next meeting, or think about redoing that whole plan and doing something.
The fence on the new part is good, it's, it's the old part that-
That's kind of what I can tell.
Needs to be repaired.
Yeah.
So we are working on a solution to that.
Item number six, moving forward on the agenda, item number sixteen. Um, we will enter into executive session. We'd like to remind any, any and everybody in here that the cameras are on and the audio is still on. So anything you say then will be heard. So at this time, we will go into executive session.
What time do you have on? God, we can have four.
Hold it, uh, the time is nine fifteen.
Is it alive?